Yes, yes.
So, um, oh, but heads up. All right. Good evening, everybody. I know we're starting a little bit early tonight, but appreciate everybody accommodating. We've got a lot on the agenda. And so we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, republic, states, one nation, our God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. All right. At the preliminary matter, this is select board clerk Christine St. John. Acting as chair in the absence of Jeffrey Swanberry. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, actually, we're all in. We're all present, so. I will call, we'll call, and then we will be able to just use our hands because there's no one on Zoom. Correct? Yes. So Chris.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
And I'm, yes. Uh, we can see staff is here. And good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted in both person and via Zoom. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and the sun attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you. And to take care not to screen share your computer, anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of tonight's materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials are available in board docs. And we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I know otherwise. Before we begin. Permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. We'll go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, if you're participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. For all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in, engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comment, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to clearly state their names and address. Prior to making their comment and public comments will be limited to three minutes each. All right. Thank you. And we will turn to the first item on the agenda, which is public comments. Do we have any public comments here this evening? All right. Seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. And these are all items that we have. We have approved in the past. Uh, we've got the spring art walk. We have the tree and menorah lighting. Cemetery deed and license to enter and use town of land for maple sugaring. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? About any of these? All right. Then I'll, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda items A through D as presented contingent upon adherence to all federal. State and local public health and safety guidelines in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second, all in favor? Greg, do you want a separate motion for item D? Or are you good with that?
I would, uh, please, yeah.
Okay, so, um, so we're going to actually look at item D. Uh, there was a liability insurance waiver.
Yeah.
Um, that was new that you, so we wanted to. Uh, we wanted to run that by the board. So basically, uh, the applicant is submitting a. What, so Greg, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So, um, so George Parker does this every year for however many years he's been doing it. He tested and able to reason a little, of course. And, and as we're just trying to make sure that everyone's on the up and up when it comes to other liability insurance requirements that we really require per use of town land, that that is what you're doing. You just, it's a simple enough, it's in signing waiver, which you did. Oh, and just, we just want a clarification, although he's already signed it. So when I wrote this motion, and not yet. But so at this point, maybe it's, but it's probably just good, just for like the public appearance that yes, we still do require insurance. If you're going to do something on town land, however, the board is recognizing that this is an exception. So if you want, you can move. To prove, um, to prove him contingent upon his submission and that acceptance of current liability insurance waiver. But he already decided.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to move that?
I guess.
Go for it.
Just to cover our bases, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Move to approve license to enter a used town or land for maple sugaring to George Parker. Effective February 7th through December 31st, 2023. Contingent upon applicant submission and town acceptance of current liability insurance waiver.
Do I have a second?
Oh, sir.
All in favor? And all right. Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Um, next item three, we have, uh, we don't. Don't have these too often, but we have a notice of relinquishment, relinquishment. Of the alcohol license for the taproom at Bull Spit Brewing. Uh, Greg, would you like to speak to this?
So just, so, um. You know, unfortunately Bull Spit is not sticking around in May, so.
Yeah.
So that what, because it doesn't come to, well, the reasons it doesn't come to the board, because typically the commodity that is licensed is just transferred amongst another owner. So like someone will buy the restaurant or move it and then they work out a deal amongst themselves about costs of that. In this case, apparently Bull Spit is not identified anymore anymore anyone wants to take that license, that's the license. So it gets. They're just basically called back to the town.
Just hold on to it.
Eighteen, this, this is what you gotta do. You gotta notify them officially of this relinquishment and as a local licensing authority. It's as simple as that, apparently.
Theoretically, they could have, uh, seen a business coming in. Through 129, say, for example, that wanted a, a license. But I, I would guess they probably figure we have enough in town that, that they're not going to be worth much. Because they're not going to pay more than what they're going to pay to the town.
Couldn't say, you know, that might be the case. I have no idea. Maybe they also.
Tied to an ad.
No, so I think, I think it is, I think both may be the case. One, it should be tied to an address like we do it, identify where it is. And then two, that there, we didn't hear of any sort of, correct? No, the US, we didn't hear of any sort of a dealing or non-dealing anyways. You're right, they're, they're available licenses, but, but even so, it's just, especially if it's a transfer of a license of a, of a restaurant and therefore a common bigger license and otherwise. It's just, that's part of the deal. They, we're dealing with a package that's like between hands. And part of the transfer of the life of the whole business includes the commodity of the package choice. Yeah, I don't know if they, I don't.
I'm fine. Take it fair.
Yeah.
Put it in our pocket.
All right. Any other questions? I'm in a motion.
Uh, move to notify the alcoholic beverage control commission, ABCC, that the taproom at Bull Spit Brewing Company has relinquished their license to the select board. As the town's local licensing authority authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor? Thank you. Excellent. All right. Um, next item on the agenda is to, uh, reappoint Elijah Tucker to the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission. Uh, hey Elijah, how are you? Thank you for coming in tonight. Is there anything you would like to tell us? How, how has your experience been on the, um? Commission so far?
Pretty good. We've been busy. A lot of going on between different, um, groups. Um, I've. I've, well, recently been, um, talking with Megan, the fire department. With the whole situation there, but it's been great. But, um. Going through, we have a couple things coming up next week, so.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Well, I thank you very much for all the work you've done so far and look forward to having you on, um, for another few years at least. Anybody else have any?
I have no questions. Thank you, Elijah, and thank you for your work.
I will entertain a motion. Yes. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to reappoint Elijah Tucker to the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission, with the term expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Get sworn in again, though.
Yes, don't forget to get sworn in.
You can even go there now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it might be there.
I don't think you, oh, wait, no, it is ready. You signed it, so.
Absolutely. We're that efficient.
Right here.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
All right. Next is the, uh, 6163 Summer Street reuse committee. Now, we've seen this. A few times as far as, uh. Looking for a charge, deciding on a charge, we interviewed, uh, some recommended candidate. There are some candidates that submitted interest. Um, statements of interest last meeting. And so the first thing we need to do is decide on the charge and then we can decide on the appointments. I saw a, let's see. The draft charge on board docs, um, basically.
It's not much change.
Not much change.
Uh, but the board can always change that later. You can amend the charge.
Yeah. Yeah.
But right, so there's, you know, just capturing some of the discussion that the board has had the last couple of meetings. And so right now, it's, it's still pretty straightforward.
Um. Yeah.
Really the baseline expectations that the less than three options to the board.
Yeah.
So if you want to do any more details, you can at any point, but I, my recommendation is this, as you said, manager. Do the charge now.
Right.
If you want to amend it later, you can, and therefore you can make the.
They need additional guidance or, or whatnot. Um, yeah, so I know this one, you know, the method and, and we know this, but, you know, review the relevant documents, meet with town staff, relevant committee. Uh, local experts on zoning, affordable housing, real estate. Understand the potential uses for the site and impact the town and community and consider perspectives of local neighborhoods, of others and others. Uh, I know we heard, uh, from all the candidates last, last meeting. And, um, there were a lot of great ideas. I think that what we want to make sure of is that all ideas are being explored and, you know, even if. You know, one or two might not think that's a great idea. We, we just, we want to know what they are first, so then we can. We can, um, sort through them ourselves as well. Um, but we look forward to, um, there was a, a very robust, uh, group of people that are. Um, but we look forward to, um, there was a very robust, uh, group of people that are very smart and collaborative. So I look forward to seeing what, what they can come up with. Uh, how does everybody feel about the charge?
I think it's fine. Um, what I would comment on, and I know that there's a bunch of the group of folks that, uh, that gave their names as candidates, um, having had the opportunity, um, over the last week and a half, two weeks, collecting signatures, uh, for this job. I've learned that this building is of importance and interest to a lot of people. And most have an opinion and most have a desire. Um, so it's going to be, I think, an interesting exploration of opportunities. And you may very well find members of the committee that, uh, it won't just be an empty room because there's enough interest out there, like be showing up to discuss and have their, their insight. And I, I hope it is that, a vibrant and a robust community conversation. That's it.
Great. Chris?
I'm fine with the charges.
All right, great, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to establish sixty-one, sixty-three Summer Street Reuse Committee for the charge to submit no less than three off the select board for the reuse of sixty-one, sixty-three Summer Street.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second. I forget there's only three of us.
Exactly. All in favor?
We're gonna call it anything.
Perfect.
No.
All right.
So the appointments, uh, is, is seven names, but it's in Armin's, um, applications, he's withdrawn, though, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we have withdrawn his application, so there, um, oh yeah, so we, you take his, um, application.
But he's not included in the list of town.
Right.
Yep, um, because he had withdrawn, so there are seven, if you take Armin off. Six, seven. I know originally we looked at a five-member committee. Um, I don't know how people feel about going with the seven, having a seven-member committee. And, um, or do you want to choose from there?
I'm okay with seven. I don't, you know, that's, I mean.
I think any bigger than sevens probably.
Yeah, but seven's about the max, but also I think that, um, there's going to be a lot thrown at these folks and to have the extra couple people is going to be helpful in the long run. And I think it also will ensure, um, you know, a format every meeting, especially when we start getting into, uh, spring and summer vacation times and stuff like.
Armed is five, right, with a committee of seven?
Uh, no, four.
Four. Four.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with seven.
Okay, how about you?
I'd be fine. I, you know, I just wanted to make sure it was odd, that it's not a odd number.
Also, I also, you know, considering they did all committing kind of the interview process with us. And I kind of, you know, I really don't like to, they notice somebody that's volunteering because then the next time and they didn't want me last time, I'm gonna go do my own thing, you know?
It's not nothing, but I don't put their name in the head.
Yeah, I think they all brought, as we heard, perspective that, that we even have listed as important perspective. Each one has a different, um, you know, sort of a different focus, if you want to call it that. Um, I, I don't think there's any, it's, it's not overly loaded in any one direction whatsoever, so I'm fine.
And then at some point, we will, so here's my question, some point, we will need a liaison or is our arts-based liaison going to be the liaison to this?
I don't know if there's any connection per se with the arts-based liaison.
That's a good question. I would say, well, who is the arts-based liaison, is that?
Is it you?
Uh, no, yes, it is.
Oh, okay, well. Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Uh, if, uh, you, you're right, David, I would agree with you that, that like, it's two different functions.
Right, okay.
Arts space has a different mission with this charge.
Yeah.
So, but maybe if you're already committed yourself to.
I'm not committing myself to participating.
I wonder, I wonder if it makes sense to ask whoever becomes the chair of this committee to have them help decide who, you know, where they think they should get a liaison from.
I think the pincom wants them to have participation.
Yeah, the pincom probably wants in.
Yeah.
I mean, we would.
Yeah.
And there might be other groups that they want to, you know, have involved as a liaison. I don't know.
But even amongst yourselves, you don't, you don't have to choose this tonight, so if you
Right.
if you want a select board, which is usually recommended, even if that means annoying to show up, it's just.
It's our job.
Yes.
Right, yeah, I know, and I wasn't planning on us deciding the liaison for us tonight. I just kind of want to throw it out there so we can put it on people's radars, that that's something that we'll figure out. Um, all right, then, uh, anybody have any other questions or comment?
Can we, yeah, the question I have is can we appoint all seven on your motion?
Uh, yeah, I would listen to names, so I would say blue to point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or who to appoint the following to the sixty-three and then, you know, yeah, you can do it one.
I'll entertain a motion.
All right, move to a point. Daniel Schisler. And if I mispronounce anyone's names, I apologize. Kedija Brown, Lisa Dunn, Breon Humphrey Berghaus, Ellen Duggan, McGeary and Andy Moran to the sixty-one, sixty-three Summer Reuse Committee for term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Sir.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor? Very good. Um, congratulations, everybody. Thank you very much for, uh, for volunteering to be on this committee. And I don't think you do need to get sworn in, so we will get that taken care of as well. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, we have contracts. So, um, first one is Lazaro paving. They did our, they did all the roadwork in town recently. Does anybody have any questions about this or want any discussion about it, or you?
It was pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Right, just for the public clarification, it's two, we have Lazaro because you're right, I'm sure that, that, that the two Lazaro, who's, who's we contracted. Um, but, but it's, one is for the old Marlboro Road Water Treatment Paving Plan, that's the first one on the agenda. And that comes out of a separate funding source and the other regular, what's called chapter ninety. Um, this is not chapter ninety, this is the water enterprise. Uh, cause it's relevant to water operations and the other one is, that'll pave it.
Okay, all right.
And I have a cold, so I said.
So what was done on Marlboro Road?
So that, that was a treat trench, um, according to Justin's memo. Um, I, I'm, I'm reading his summary from the memo. Um, it was, it was additional work, uh, once Lazaro was on, say, a trench repair and pavement quantity overages. And it's, it's.
Down towards the, uh.
It, it's, it's. Yeah, the treatment, that of all Marlboro Road, actually all Marlboro Road treatment. So, and it's safe for the treatment plant into the treatment.
Okay. The script that goes down.
Yeah, we have a larger term for trucks now. What we need is all of this, a lot of capacity withdrawals, which are interfering with others' property.
We needed more paving.
Right.
More pavement.
It's over fifty thousand dollars, so I need.
Um.
The total value of the contract.
Okay, I was gonna say, hold on. All right, so we just need to approve the fourteen thousand.
Yes.
All right.
Move to approve the change order zero, zero, one with Lazaro paving, the old Marlboro Road Water Treatment Plant paving project, the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and three dollars and twenty-eight cents, authorizing the town administrator to sign as the owner.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Um, I just, hold on, uh, one second. So did I just sign the paperwork as the owner?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
You've authorized me to sign it.
Got that one.
Okay.
Oh, good.
All right, all right, just making sure.
No, you're, you're good.
All right, on to the next one, which is, uh, another Lazaro paving. This came from the chapter ninety
Yeah.
uh, projects that we've done around town, uh, this fall, uh.
So this is additional work, so, so, uh, Justin and his team did a great job finding out that, that there was in fact additional, additional, just in them. Uh, sort of like carryover chapter ninety funds unused, yep. Um, uh, from the, uh, basically an accumulation over the years of chapter ninety funds that had just, you know, as a contract comes through and we may not spend the entirety of chapter ninety allocation from the state. So it's a little bit of carryover, that's been, that's been, uh, accumulated. And, and so these projects, uh, which is a total of ninety thousand dollars for this change order, um, uh, is being paid for from that bucket, chapter ninety.
State never comes running back for that money?
No, we checked, so, well, typically those, um, have a sunset clause for ten years. So that's actually why we did a lot of that due to the past two years, because our sunset clause is coming to blow. Um, and then one, if the board remembers, when we initiated this contract, we have to include that balance with confirmation from that due of deeds, with the understanding that we're not going to spend for that balance, knowing that there'll be change orders due to the economic volatility market, which tends to result in that, um, type of activity required. But then I, once, once this is approved, we'll submit our chapter ninety for reimbursement and then we'll have our official balance. And we'll come back in spring with a new payment, sort of, sort of, sort of.
So about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars before, if we get it issued before, um, our new chapter ninety.
Yeah, and I would say just so the board understands that chapter nine can be used in multiple ways. And our next project on our list is, uh, in effect, net conquered, hecking in aid, which we received five hundred thousand dollars in earmark from Senator Eldredge. But based off of the materials market, we may have to subsidize some of the earmark or chapter ninety, so that's kind of what we're doing. On the table, we need all our project.
Great, great. Anybody have any other questions? All right, um, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the change orders, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, six, that presented Lazaro paving for the fall pavement project in the amount of ninety thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Three hundred and thirty-two.
Three hundred and thirty-two.
Oh, nine, ninety thousand three thirty-two and sixty cents.
And I'll second.
All in favor? All right, I'm good. Thank you very much. Uh, see, the next one is, um, we saw this a couple meetings ago where we talked about the electricity supply, um, and the gas supply that is sold to us at the town. And I believe our contract had expired.
So, yes, um, yes and no. So what I brought to the board, uh, however many months ago, was, was just the electric supply. Uh, and we're, and we tried to kind of head our bets, so to speak. Uh, we went with a, a certain electricity, electricity hedge, um, of, of a certain rate for a part of what we thought we were going to have to or what we were expecting to purchase for our energy supply, electricity energy supply. But we had not contracted anything for gas. So in anticipation of our electricity supply contract, uh, which expires in February twenty-fourth. So we wanted, now, like, just looking at the market and going to our consultant, which is this firm called Tradition Energy. They said, basically, you play the futures market and, and they're saying if you lock in with, um, uh, BP Retail as a supplier, um, then we'll get a good rate. Presumably, uh, we're, February twenty, twenty twenty-four to February twenty twenty-seven. So that's, that's the one contract. And then the other one is for the gas contract. So we've been on the regular ever source, um, supply. But, um, you don't have to use it, like, that's, it's a, the common law allows for you to go outside of the utility provider for your supply. Um, so a lot of municipalities do that, and so we take advantage of that through our consultant's advice. And so, uh, the other contract is with direct energy for gas supply, uh, which is, which is good. I mean, the, uh, for our consultant's analysis, um, there's a couple of advantages with doing a lock-in contract as opposed to just going whatever the market rate is with ever source. Uh, one is the stability and then two is generally you can, you can have, you know, it's competitive, so you get a better price. So that's what we're presenting is the two, two contracts, one for electric and one for gas. And again, this is for municipal, I kind of want to make it clear, sometimes people think it's their, it's not households. We're talking about like, to keep these lights on, keep this, like, it's municipal.
But that's counted for the school.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, but it's not part of the aggregate program that we had talked about for, right, just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there any impact at all with our, um, solar array reimbursements and, you know, for how we interact with the solar array energy that's generated there?
Does it affect any question? So, so no, so I asked that, um, I want to bring up the, I asked this specific question, I think I had an email in there. We don't want to come. But yeah, so, uh, according to our consultant's disagreement, uh, which is, you know, for the board's consideration tonight, provides utility billing and full swing, allowing for any energy efficiency measures and net metering or community solar arrangements without penalty. So we were going to tie in
Yeah.
alternative energy source, so we're the rate.
And so likewise, if we, if we did end up eventually putting solar, uh, panels at schools or wherever, this wouldn't be impacted at all either.
Says without penalties, so no, it's, 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 um, I, I also, my assumption is that this is just the way the world now, like people, municipalities and other.
Yeah, I think, I think households.
Yeah, are like, are looking to take advantage of this, you know, it's alternative energy sources. So I, my suspicion is, well, energy companies have to sort of compromise.
Yeah. Okay, just want to make sure we're not selling ourselves.
No, I asked that question too, and that's why I made sure that it spoke to that.
All right. I'm not sharing a motion. There are no other questions?
I will move to authorize the town administrator will approve the agreement with BP Retail for electricity supply to municipal facilities in the amount of, uh, fourteen, well, zero dollars point one four two zero cents per kilowatt from February first, twenty twenty-four to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Then I'll, to the other one, two motion to authorize the town administrator will approve the agreement with direct energy for gas supply to municipal facilities in the amount of nine dollars, nine, nine dollars and ninety-eight cents per, I don't know what DTH stands. Uh, from November twenty twenty-three to November twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great, thank you very much.
And then manager did seven o'clock.
Yes.
He could, um, it's up to you, of course.
All right.
We moved into our reviews, which we're expecting to do some of those.
Um, can we do some of the quick stuff so that we're not, uh, like correspondences?
Uh, let me see, acceptance of minutes. All right, while we do those two, and then we'll come back to the reserve fund transfer request and the Summer Street. Uh, how's that? And then, so to max, yeah. But, um, so correspondences.
Except approved correspondence of Dave and Emma and Helen.
Wait a second.
Second.
Um, a discussion, does anybody have anything to discuss on part finances?
I would like to check back that letter H, uh, Ben and Muto.
We're gonna refuse that, not accept it.
But I understand, it'll probably come back to us again, so.
No, I, I concur.
Um, I would like to, real quick, um, I know Council on Aging, the friends of major seniors had, um, had sent in an email, I sent in a letter regarding an assessment study that they are interested in. Um, and I appreciate the work that they have done and, uh, we, you know, one of the things they had, had requested is possibly to be on the agenda to talk about, um, proposing having the assessment center, the assessment people come in to, to speak to us. Uh, and my recommendation was actually, let's be, let's be more efficient and why don't we just, if the board agrees, we can just invite them to come in and speak, the contractor to come in and, and speak to us.
Yeah, so it's just a little coordination.
Collins Center?
It's actually not the Collins Center, I, so I guess, this is understood as well. But it is still University of Massachusetts of Boston, that's the gerontology, it's institute of gerontology. I might have.
UMass Boston, Jared Collins Institute.
There you go.
Yep.
So the one, I'm fine with that, but the one question I have in regards to that, that I was gonna ask is, um, do we have letters, information from two groups?
Yeah.
When it comes time to actually provide the study and run the study and do the study, which group is it going to flow through?
My, my institution would be the Council on Aging.
The town group.
They are.
Their sound function on aging.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is why I like that, that's why it was important that, that I, and I think the board is on the same page, is emphasizing how important it was to have the Council on Aging endorsement of it. They didn't think it was a bad idea in the first place.
Right, so, so to follow up on that, I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, you and Jeff or you and Justin, have had conversations about putting combination of those two groups on, on a future agenda to come in and talk about this.
Yeah.
You know, that type of thing, is that going to happen?
That's, that's what I think, uh, Justin was kind of.
Right, right, that she was talking about the person that's going to do the study, the group is going to be the study. I was, I'm asking, are we, other than the letters, are we anticipating having the, you know, Council on Aging and the, um, focus group, any of those folk come in, talk to this, or, or no?
We can if you want.
No, I, I, no, I don't need to. I think the letters are enough. I'm just, I know that there was a desire on some of the members of some of the groups on their parts to, to come in and be part of an agenda to discuss this. But I don't, but I, if, if, I don't know that that's not the, given the letters we received. And then the fact that, um, I think it was the focus group that suggested the group that's going to conduct the study and really to come in.
You, you, that's right. So perhaps after you hear, maybe this is, we invite, um, the Gerontology Institute person. And then they say, this is what we can do for you. Then perhaps you hear that as well as Council on Aging and this senior center of focus group. And, and then all of you together, ultimately with the board being the decision maker, to say, hey, we like what we hear. Great, figure out how to pay for it, or no thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I absolutely want to include, um, include everybody in that. It was just more, I was looking, trying to figure out more efficient way to get, to get them in here quicker. Get them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, just curious, that's all.
Um, the other thing was, um, real quick was, uh, we did receive the sustainability committee email, um, regarding um, regarding their request for a, a presentation. So what I can do is, uh, as, you know, Chris and I are obviously members of the building committee and we can refer this, uh, to the building committee. Uh, see what the thoughts are. I know that, um, we've been having good conversations recently, um, regarding, uh, the building itself. And, uh, and we continue to move forward. And so I will forward this to the chair um, of the building committee and we can go from there.
I just want to also clarify, those people are calling home. You're referring to Green Meadows.
Yes, sorry, the green.
No, that's okay.
As opposed to the. Uh, yep.
But you're right. So the sustainability committee had submitted, uh, a request to board to hear them out specifically regarding the Green Meadows.
Correct. Yep. Uh, and, all right, any other comments or questions on the part time?
Yeah, the only other, the only other comment that we make is, um, great kind of touch on this in an email to us, um, in regards to, um, town's veteran service officer, Wayne Stanley. And I read the letter, somebody that's, the information is number one, seven years old, several years old. And unfortunately, number two, the gentleman who, uh, is alleged to have had the, um, you know, part of the conversations with Wayne has passed, um, several years ago as well. And I just, I just thought it would, bears mentioning in, on Wayne's behalf that, I mean, I've been here in this seat for several years now, eighth to be exact, and I have never heard anyone complain about Wayne in, in that manner or that, that way. And I just, you know, in support of Wayne, I just think it's for anybody that's reading this, the feeling is, oh, we need, uh, we have a problem with that veteran service officer. I just would say, no, we don't.
I would concur.
Okay. Anybody else?
I can't, everybody, I can't, I can't beat anybody else.
All right, we already have motion in the second, so all in favor. All right, very good. And, um, you know what, I'm even going to, we went a little bit longer than I wanted to for that, so we're going to go back and we're going to do, um, so if someone can keep track for me, we're now going to do, we have to do seven, eight and ten when we come back. So we will move into the fire chief interviews. So, um, basically we had, uh, a fire chief search process. Or a fire chief search proposal. We hired a independent consulting firm, John Parrow Consulting Associates. Uh, we had a timeline. Uh, we knew, um, that unfortunately Chief Star was retiring and, uh, but he did give us enough time to try to, um, have a productive process. And I, I, I personally was very impressed by, uh, Jack Parrow Consultants and how that whole process, uh, was was presented. Um, I think that it is a, an open process, uh, with assessments and anonymity. Um, and so, uh, we, I mean, we didn't find out who the candidates were until two days ago. So, um, so I think that it is, um, I think it, it's a little, I will admit, it's a little awkward to do in-person meetings, um, and make in-person decisions in public. So I'm just sort of going to that right now. Um, but that's what we're going to do. So, uh, do you have anything to contribute, uh, to add to that?
No, I, I appreciate it. We, we had, uh, uh, I also appreciated all the advocates. So we had a number of maybe ten or so, eleven advocates in the study. Um, and so there was one, against, I really appreciate Jack Parrow and, and his team for, for really kind of hosting the assessment center and helping us for a guide setting that I do this process, not every day, not very often you have to hire a chief. Uh, and so it's, it was, it was kind of really eye-opening and gentle. We're very helpful in this whole process. So I'm very confident within the process that got to this point, um, there is only the two candidates to present to the board. Um, so I look forward to you hearing from these two candidates.
And I did want to, um, circle back about that, is that there five, there were five candidates that went to the assessment center?
No.
Four?
How many came to the assessment?
Only three came, five. We had five coming and dropped out like the day before.
Okay, all right. So five were forwarded to the assessment center. But two didn't go get assessed, the other three did, and then one dropped. So now we have, we have our candidates. I just want to make sure that everyone knew how, where we are. Okay, perfect.
So if, so maybe, like, Jack, you want to come on up?
We ready for the game?
Jack, are we, I mean, yeah, we need.
We know this?
Yeah, we want to vote it.
I haven't held it either, so.
You didn't check, you want to sit up front? Did you make sure that's, I don't want.
Yeah, great. No, I'm, I don't.
That would, that would kind of answer.
All of us. Greg Wilson. Greg Wilson. Did you take? Take the stuff I was finding?
He's here, so like this.
Yeah.
I put it over here.
Okay, I am, I'm not done. And get it back to you. All right, sounds good, sorry. Do, all right, thank you very much. All right, um, we're just waiting for a settling.
So I think for the public, we have a set of big questions that I'll ask some of the questions, the board's going to ask some of the questions and, uh, the candidate will, uh.
Yep, and if we, for some reason decide on an extra question here or there, uh, just make sure that we ask both candidates the same question.
Right.
Yep, absolutely.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Coffee's in my resume, you might have to pass it out.
Absolutely, come on in.
Jack, if you're ready.
I, I haven't.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Happy.
Cool.
I want to.
Sure.
It's hard for you. Some of you are.
Welcome. Have a seat.
Thank you very much.
So I'm looking at Jack mostly for.
Okay.
That's what I was. You do this all the time, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but you look to me if you tell, if I need to focus.
Okay, thank you for, uh, coming tonight and thank you on behalf of the town and the board of selectmen for, uh, being your interest in this position and going through the, the process. Uh, we have a series of questions to ask you over the next thirty, thirty-five minutes. We want you to answer them completely but succinctly. So if you can answer a question in just a few words, just answer in a few words. But again, we want you to answer the question bold.
Um, Jack, just a minute. And for the public, this is Angela LaVallis, uh, or maybe, maybe I stepped on you, Jack, maybe you're, yourself, but, uh,
Candidate one.
Yeah, candidate one, and we'll all, so thank you.
And for Angela.
Okay, okay. So in order to get through the questions, we have fifteen or sixteen questions. Probably three to two minutes on the average of the question. And I'll ask, um, the first nine or so. The board will ask a few questions and then I'll have a few questions at the end. If we have time at the end, there may be some follow-up questions from the board. And it may be time for you to ask a few questions.
Excellent.
Okay.
I understand.
So I'm going to hold you to the thirty-five. Okay, we'd like to start the process with you taking a few minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself and why the Maynard Fire Department and the town of Maynard are a good professional fit for you.
Um, excellent. So I wanted to be a firefighter since I was in the second grade. Um, my dad was a firefighter. I grew up in very rural Maine. Um, he brought a fire truck to my second birthday and I knew that that's what I wanted to do for the rest of my life. So my whole world, I've been progressing towards today. I'm very honored to be here and I appreciate that. Um, I started originally in a call department and when the opportunity came to apply for Maynard, um, I found myself as a good fit at that one. So that was about ten years ago now. Started here as a firefighter and then progressed to a captain where I am today. Um, the town suits me very well. It's, um, kind of my people, if that makes sense. Um, coming from Maine, it's, Maynard is, um, kind of has some similar qualities in that small community. You get to know a lot of people. Um, very tight-knit group and I like that. Gives me an opportunity to meet lots of people and to have a positive impact on the community and that's something that I enjoy. I've been very dedicated here in the town of Maynard and hope to stay.
Thank you. In your view, is there a difference between management and leadership?
Absolutely. Um, so management is, is just that, you kind of manage the situation where leadership, you're, you lead the people. Um, I tend to lead by trying to motivate people. Uh, more of a servant leader than anything else. I try to support my people and bring them toward a united goal. Um, try not to micromanage, if that makes sense, and empower people to make their own choices. Keep them in line, lead them to the, the same mission that we are.
You've kind of dovetailed that into the second question, but what would you say your leadership style is?
On the fire service, it's situational for sure. Um, it can change every hour to every half an hour, really. Um, as the day dictates, your leadership style also has to move with it. Um, so for now, I would say I'm a situational leader. If I had to look at who I am overall, like I said, it's a servant leader or a little transformational leadership. I'm very big on supporting my people and motivating them, giving them the tools and resources they need to be successful and trying to identify their skills and resources that they have so that I can help them move with where they need to be.
If you had to list one thing you stand for as a leader, what would that be?
Um, I think I've said it last couple of things, really supporting my people is the biggest part of leadership to me. Um, I really want to get behind people, recognize what their skill set is and use those skills to bring the group with people towards the common mission.
So as a leader, how do you make sure everyone in the organization knows what's expected of them?
Um, so I think that my biggest leadership style in that way is for me by example. Um, as a captain, we do have morning meetings where we kind of go over the expectations. You know, what the day is to bring, but I would say your leadership style, it's more of a, um, a personality. There, I don't have to go over the expectations every day. They know what I've done, decided way that I mean.
What advantages do you see in having an open and collaborative relationship with other department head and outside agencies?
That's one of my favorite things about being in the public safety is the whole group dynamics, right? Even if you break it down into the fire service as well, you have groups of five individuals. And there's so many different people with so many different personalities, different backgrounds, a whole diversity piece. That means they all have different solutions, different ideas, different ways to solve the same problem. And that's a great resource. I feel like as a fire chief, you have that opportunity way more. To collaborate with other department heads, you're going to be very successful. Um, that's something that I've done as a captain and I'm looking forward to doing as a fire chief.
What level of involvement have you had with budget creation and budget management?
Um, so this time last year, I was acting chief. Uh, it was unexpected circumstances with zero preparation. So at that point, I was kind of thrown into the situation and had to manage the budget. Um, and make sure, as that a town leader says, keep the ship afloat, not something that I had to do. Um, we were building a fire station at the time. And so I had to take over that budgeting as well and work on that as well as the town budget. So that was complicated. Um, and the other involvement I had at the town is I'm our EMF coordinator. So I've worked the last ten years on, you know, everything with the EMFs. So I dealt with developing that budget in Man's Union. Uh, and the past year, each hour has allowed me to help in the development of this year's budget as well.
Very good. Could you share a professional experience you've had with a difficult employee that you could provide? How you handled it and what was the outcome for the employee in the department?
Um, so I'm someone who tends to go to extremes, so I'll go with my most extreme example of a difficult employee. Uh, it was when I was newly hired as a captain. And, um, I was um, given a brand-new hire that I was training as the probationary firefighter. Um, I wanted nothing but the most success for this person and as well as it was difficult because um, I felt as if I was being judged as a captain at the same time. So wanting to have them go the best that they can go, but also feeling a little bit of pressure that this was the first person I trained as the captain. Um, after a certain amount of time, a lot of work, a lot of evaluation, things didn't, weren't progressing at the rate that they were supposed to. And it became a state issue to the other firefighters. So there was a lot of counseling, a lot of mentoring, a lot of trying and retrying, but I finally had to make the decision to request that that person was, um, eliminated. And that was a very difficult position, but it was the best for the overall department.
What are your thoughts on professional development, both for you and for department members?
Well, you have a copy of my resume. So you can see that professional development is very important to me. Um, if I'm not signed up to learn something new, I kind of feel like I don't know what I'm doing with myself. Very goal-oriented and task-minded individual. And professional development is very important to that. Um, also you learn so much from the networking aspect. Just being able to speak to other people in the same line of work from different departments is very important. But for me, I value professional development extremely high and also expect my firefighters to do the same.
So how do you pass that down? You've taken many classes at the National Fire Academy, um, you have your master's degree.
Yes.
How do you expect to pass that down to the, to the firefighters that would be working for you in the office?
Well, I'm very enthusiastic about my education and I try to share every future knowledge that I get to hope to motivate them to take other classes the same way. So, again, to go back to that skill set thing, when you find what somebody's interested in, to be able to find out other kinds of professional development that they're interested in and offer opportunities to them, that's how we usually move.
Mental health, health wellness becoming glaringly important members of the fire service. How, how would you create an environment and culture in the Maynard Fire Department to encourage this?
Um, this is actually something I'd like to approach, to achieve with. Um, I kind of have a dream, lack of a better word. Um, a while back, I partnered with Emerson Hospital to bring in health and wellness coaches um, to our department. So they taught us nutrition and cooking and label, label reading and yoga and all kinds of different ways to deal with health and wellness that way. Um, we actually got a pretty good write-up in May, Emerson Hospital. We actually got a pretty good write up in Emerson Hospital newsletter. I would like to do the same thing to kind of work with mental health of firefighters. We have a, like a clergy opportunity that we can call and a critical stress to be, the briefing team that we can call when somebody's in crisis. I think that we've missed the ball if we wait till somebody's in crisis. Especially with mental health, it's so much more effective if you can have a relationship with that person during crisis and expect somebody to divulge your feelings in a crisis. So I'd like to find a way to find an opportunity where we can get counseling involved with our firefighters as a normal thing. We want to work, we want to actually save a relationship before, so if they are in crisis, we have that opportunity.
So currently the department doesn't have it again, but you would like to develop.
Yeah, I mean, we do have the standard district team available, but I think we can do better.
As the new fire chief, there might be some resentment in the department on your appointment. How would you approach this?
Well, with any change, change is difficult. Change is difficult for a lot of people. So there would be some time that I'm sure would take some people to get used to a new leader. So there would be many resources that I would reach out to. So first off, understanding that most people, when they have an issue, usually something internal, not the actual change. So take the opportunity to sit and talk and to listen to that person and see if you can solve the problem before it grows would be my step number one. Step number two, through all this education that we've, we've talked about. I just finished the chief fire officer class, which was really done with Massachusetts State Chief. So I had an excellent resource there of people that have been through exactly what I would deal with. So I would reach out and network a little bit as well if things weren't going the way that I could.
I'm gonna open it up to a few questions from the board. Welcome Gavin.
Yeah, I've got a question. Captain, the next few years are gonna be difficult. We'll test the financial management and creativity of all local governments and ours is not an exception. Please describe your experience or ideas in dealing with constrained resources as well as your ideas to contain and reduce costs while maintaining adequate levels of service.
That's definitely gonna be a challenge. As you noted, and understand that budget constraints are an issue for every organization in all municipalities at this time. So I guess my answer would be I don't have a ton of experience in that. However, I do understand when working with the ambulance on how to make sure that you don't overextend yourself. That's the right word. Know what resources you have, what you can, what you need, what you can get. The other thing is to look for grants. Deal with as much grant finding as you can do through different avenues and not just the fire service. Maybe looking outside of the box, outside of the normal way of getting firefighter equipment and stuff. And I have had some successful grant writing at this point.
Thank you.
So that kind of, that's my question. So yeah, but to follow up, the question that I was going to ask was, do you have experience in running and obtaining grants? And obviously you do, but you just maybe kind of elaborate a little bit on your experience with grants here in town and how you've been successful in obtaining grants with seven, eight, nine, five.
Most, I obtained an A D for a fire engine that didn't have one. And the intent on that one is just gonna move to our new engine so that we won't have to purchase a new one when that transition happens. I obtained a grant for basically a carbon monoxide detector for a person. Which tests the blood level to see if a firefighter or a person who's been involved in a C O incident has any C O in their blood. So that was a few years ago. And I work seamlessly, one of my biggest actives in firefighting is firefighter wellness. And that being a whole person, we talk about the mental health, but physical fitness is a huge drive for me. So I worked very closely with the chief to obtain a wellness grant a few years ago. We were able to obtain twenty thousand dollars that we used for a gym. And I built that gym. That's for example.
Thank you.
And what level of experience do you have in collective bargaining or labor relations?
Not a lot beyond that. I've taken a class on it. As a matter of fact, Mr. Perro was my teacher. Very ironic.
Yes.
True fact. I was in the union, but not in the rotation team. That is a skill that I don't have.
Okay, so I have a few questions. These are more situational questions. So you're at a house fire and you see one of your firefighters take jewelry off a dresser and put it in their pocket. What would you do?
So I would obviously confront them right there. I'm gonna put it back. Try to do it privately in that situation, meaning not in front of the other firefighters. And then we would just deal with that when we got back. Fix the situation right to there, but then there would be disciplinary action when we go home.
The town administrators asked you to implement something that the union is very opposed to. How would you work to get the firefighters on board?
So sometimes, as I said, change is difficult. Sometimes it takes time. And you have to create that buy-in. So when you find your people that believe in the same thing, that hard to do so hypothetically, which I don't know what it is. But you know, whatever the initiative was, somebody kind of will also agree. So you've got to create that buy-in, do some research, show the importance, brief the reasoning why that initiative is being made for whatever reason and take the time to sell it. Meaning you can't just go in and say this way, if you want it to be successful. Have too much to say.
So as you're aware, we had many extremely well qualified and experienced candidates apply for this position. Why was the town, why is it in the best interest of the town to hire you for this position?
I think we're a good fit for the job based on the fact that I have the experience with the town, the people, the department heads. I have the experience being the fire chief. I am super motivated and enthusiastic about everything that I do. So I'm always, I'm one of those people who is all in. If I'm gonna run a race, I'm gonna run the five K, I'm gonna run the marathon. It's just my personality. I'm very task driven and I'm looking for goals and success. This would be no different.
Thank you. Do we have a few more minutes? Do we have any follow up questions from the board?
I have a question sort of unrelated to what we've talked about thus far. But it's important, I think, when you're a leader in a department like this, whether it be Maynard or any other community. And we've seen it especially lately in Duxbury with a tragic situation where the media gets heavily involved. What experience do you have in dealing with the media? And how would you deal with a situation like, God forbid, we ever have to deal with what they dealt with on the South Shore, but with a crisis situation relative to large media attention?
Right. I don't have a lot of media experience. I have done a few commercials. That's unrelated. For the call department that I was involved with, I did a little bit more media exposure there. I don't know if you would like to hear about that. Kind of unrelated.
Go right ahead.
One was I led a campaign to repaint our fire station. And we got a lot of media exposure from that because I got all the work and all the labor and all the resources, including food, paint, paint presses, everything was donated and we got it done and to do. So there was a lot of positive media on that, but I had to do some press conferences and they was up for that. There was another situation where I got very involved with a person that lost their dogs in their house in an apartment fire. And I found a lot of resources donating to them and I had some media exposure from that. I haven't had any tragedies like that.
Thank, thank God.
Exactly. I think that my nature is to be very compassionate and understanding and can be straightforward at the same time. So in that situation, obviously I would take my time to formulate a statement. But also hope that those making much as possible and be there for them much after the incident.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just was gonna follow up a little bit on Justin's question in regards to collective bargaining and labor relations. It's because of the three of us and as an audience, I'm dreaming in the room as well. And what I would like to clarify, your answer was fine, but in my mind, it's not fine for you because you do have experience with negotiations and labor relations by way of being a member of the bargaining unit. So I think, you know, don't sell yourself short in that regard because I think that's, that's where everybody that, everybody that negotiates those contracts comes from where you are today. So you sitting in your position, I think you have plenty of, you know, interaction and stuff with those things. But to just say, I don't really have that, I think that tells you short and I don't want to see you do that because for the people that are listening, I think that that's important. Because everybody negotiates a union contract anywhere from both this side and that side for the most part had had that, you know, that experience and that's, and that's important. I do that, that's what I do for a living. So when people say, I don't know, well, you do know because you've been part of our working made contracts in Maynard, maybe in Maine as well. I don't know what that situation was, but so you, you know, don't say you don't have that experience. Can you deal? That's just my opinion.
I appreciate that.
Okay, I guess we have a few more minutes. I just want to clear with the board. It's okay if she has any question.
Yes, absolutely.
We have a few minutes for a few questions.
I feel very comfortable with the process and I know all of you, so I don't really have a ton of follow up questions.
I'm gonna request you about one.
At least one.
But you have a spot. Do you think about it? But just one question.
What are your expectations of the transition to the new fire chief?
Are you prepared to answer?
No, I'm not prepared to answer at all. I was gonna throw one question because I sit in on the police interviews. And the last question on the police interviews is, tell us something that we don't know about you that's not on your resume.
I can write you anything.
That's legit. That's a good interview. Don't have to be arguing like that. That's a good one.
I'll be happy to do lessons. Do you have any, I am, I'm bypassing the, honestly, you had a great question. You really did. Do you have any?
Expectations?
Yes, what's your expectation?
My expectations is that for the next chief, that the chief will take our department. It's kind of cliche, but to the next level. I am so proud of what Chief Stowers has done since he came on board. You know, Maynard was, we always had a great department, great chief or whatever. And it was, it was a little difficult at the time because we went outside and we hired a chief nobody knew. And we took a risk and with the expectations that he would lead the department in a new direction. Indeed, he did. It was wonderful. So I'm hopeful that we can have similar, you know, now we're at this level and move it further on. And there's gonna be a lot of challenges with that specifically, I think, driven by budget. And the fact that we don't have the resources to really offer much to allow growth beyond just the team that I've built. So I also hope that our next chief builds a bit on the community aspect of firefighter.
I wish that was one of the questions. I have an answer for that.
Go ahead.
Exactly. You almost outlined exactly what my goal is. So I would like to partner with a lot of the other community organizations that really, I would say, have been forgotten. And by, some of it is no fault of circumstance. COVID has really kind of put everybody in their own little bubble. And I think going off of what you said, Chief Stowers did a great job. We have a brand new station. We all have good gear. We have good equipment. Like we're really starting at a pretty high platform. So now with our opportunity to go out into the community and make those partnerships. So, I mean, very good example, but one that just happened is I sat down downstairs with the veterans affair person and had quite a great discussion on how we could get involved with Flag Day and things we could do for the veterans and how he wanted to come in and give a speech to us. And I was like, absolutely. This week, I was reached out to the domestic violence coordinator in town. We have now a safe place in our station, which is kind of a unique feature that if somebody's in trouble, that they can come and have a barricaded safe place that's built right into our station. We thought this was fabulous. She wants me to give classes to our first responders on how to deal with this situation. But also, how can we partner to publish to the community that they know that's a resource we have? So, you know, we do really, really well in getting out there and talking to the schools and our elders. Could do better with the elders, but those are our two cents, but we miss the middle group of people. So those are the people that we need to get together with and do a lot more than that, so to speak.
Speaking of veterans, there was, coincidentally, there was a resident who spoke to me recently about asking. And so whoever our next chief is, I hope that he or she will consider this because I thought it was pretty neat. Apparently in Stowe, they have a place for disposal of used flags.
That's what we were just.
And in Maynard, we don't have that. You know, we have our, our Flag Day ceremony where they burn the flags or whatever. But a respectful disposition of a used and destroyed or, you know, old flag. Apparently they have that in Stowe. We don't have it in Maynard. And somebody asked me as I was roaming around.
Like, we'll drop them off for as long as I've been there. So we do collect them, but you're right, we don't have a published receptacle. We're gonna do it and do it carefully. And also we were discussing that we should keep the boys and girls involved in that exact same situation and show that pride and.
That's it for me.
Captain, thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Thank you for what you do every day. And thank you for your interest in this position.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good luck.
The other candidate should be here.
Yeah. When he comes in, I'll announce his name. No, that's okay. That's all right. No worries.
So do you want to say his name?
I'll say his name.
And leave it to you clearly.
Try to speak.
You want to do something, right? Getting, getting, getting.
Stephanie told me what to say. Oh, you guys want to say.
All right.
What time did they go to pick the dog up?
I can't remember. It was about a three and a half hour ride.
Two hours.
Beating.
The two hour rest point was in, in Freetown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can't even remember what it was.
All right. Come on in. So Mark Foley? Foley. All right.
So I got resumes. I don't know if you guys have them or not.
Feel free. Absolutely.
You want a chief?
I have one.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My pleasure.
Very great. Have a seat. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you very much for having me.
Stephanie, I want to thank you for your interest in the, in the town of Maynard in the fire chief position.
You know, counted in, in the fire chief position. And we have a few questions, probably about fifteen questions to ask. Uh, we have thirty, thirty-five minutes to do it, so. Um, I would ask you to answer, answer the questions completely, but to think, so if you can answer the question in just a few words. That's adequate.
Yep.
Uh, but I don't want you to cut yourself short and not answer completely, but. So I would say we have fifteen or so questions. If you average two, three minutes per question, you'll, you'll keep yourself out of trouble.
Got it. On the map. We're good.
Okay. So I'd like to start the process. You've taken a few minutes to, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself. And why the Maynard Fire Department in the town of Maynard is a good professional thing to do.
Yeah, certainly. Uh, before I get into the answer, I just wanted to take and thank the board. Um, a tremendous opportunity uh, to be part of this process. Um, the process run by Jack Power so he's incredibly uh. Professional in the cap for the past few weeks. Um, so I thank him for that. Uh, when you prepare for an interview like this, uh, the amount of stuff that you think you need to research is incredible. Uh, one of the rabbit holes that I wandered down to was uh, how important of an opportunity is performing. The US Fire Administration said there's one point two million firefighters in the United States. Only two point two percent of those firefighters get the opportunity to serve as fire chief. So when I tell you that I'm very humbled to be here this evening, certainly that is why. Uh, and I'm very humbled. Um, as Chief Harrow said, my name is Mark Foley. Uh, I am in my twenty-six year in the fire service. Uh, the past twenty-two years that I've served in the city of Nashville. Um, I have gone through the ranks of firefighter, uh, training safety lieutenant, uh, fire lieutenant, fire captain. And I currently serve as a deputy fire chief, one of four of our ship commanders. Um, my day-to-day functions at work are the uh, day-to-day operations of the city of Nashville. I oversee um, six fire companies, uh, six fire stations, our own office. And uh, in that is forty-one personnel. So it keeps me pretty busy. Uh, my educational requirements are something I'm pretty proud of. Um, I have an associate's degree in fire science. I have a bachelor's degree in fire service administration. I have a master's degree in public administration and emergency management. Uh, and in the hundred and twelfth Congress of the United States of America, established the funding to title it executive fire officer. Seven years ago, when I graduated, the National Fire Academy Executive Fire Officer Program. Uh, it's a program that across the world is considered the premier fire service leadership program. Um, so it's something I'm very, very proud of. Um, my role in the fire department, uh, obviously is the operational component. We have a series of, of administrative responsibilities that we have. I oversee our health and wellness program. I oversee our grant management program. I oversee our, um, hazard materials from an operate, from an administrative standpoint. I work with our hazmat captain on the operations side of things. Uh, so I've been pretty busy in the last years. Um, all of that stuff would absolutely not be possible. Uh, without the support of my wife Kelly, who has uh, been married to for twenty years. She is a professional photographer and owns her own business. My son Patrick is sixteen years old and a sophomore in National High School in North. And my daughter Paige turns thirteen on Sunday. And uh, she is in seventh grade uh, at Kindergarten Middle School. Um, as to why the Maynard Fire Department is an opportunity for me and why I'm interested in the town of Maynard, in one word, it's an opportunity. Uh, my entire career has been about building an opportunity. Uh, from the time I was a very, very young firefighter. I had aspirations of leading a fire department and building myself and preparing myself as best I can. So that when an opportunity presented itself, I was as prepared as I possibly could be. Uh, when I pulled into the assessment center last week, I came up past the library, took a left into the Millamane complex. And the right-hand side, it was uh, I think it was Railroad Street. Um, and I saw this long, two-story gray flat roof, multi-film dwelling. I think it's eight apartment units, uh. I pulled into the parking lot, I was a few minutes early, and I was looking over to the firehouse to my left, and I saw that building. And I said, that's the opportunity that I'm talking about. That's why I wanna come to the Maynard Fire Department. Uh, the tactical considerations that takes to protect the community is something that you gain over twenty-six years. It's something that I'm very, very proud of. I'm proud of my preparation. As I looked at that building, that long, two-story building, I said, within there are members of the community. Uh, there is infrastructure, the fire department is tapped to protect. And within that is the responsibility and the opportunity to lead the Maynard Fire Department. When something like that occurs, in my twenty-six years, I think you have the ability and the responsibilities to look at it. As I was sitting there in those few moments, I thought about, if there's a fire in there, how do you make a fire department, the five firefighters you have on duty, how do they respond to that? Um, it's a challenge that I look forward to working with them to, to solve. And as I sat through that environment that morning, it was above an opportunity. And I think there are several here in, in the town of Maynard that interest me.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
In your view, is there a difference between management and leadership?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, obviously, there's textbook answers. The management is uh, the procedural things that we have to do as, as supervisors and as, as fire chiefs. We have to establish policy. We have to establish procedure. We have to ensure that the department is running properly. We have. Uh, budgetary requirements that we have to oversee, and that's the management part. Uh, the back on in the management part of overseeing the fire department comes from formal education. Uh, that's why I seek the education that I did early in my career. Uh, through all of those components of your time getting a bachelor's degree in fire administration and the time that. Uh, in my master's degree program, you get exposed to all of those parts of the management side of the business. The leadership part, for the leadership part is day one of the fire department, when I walk into the Maynard Firehouse. And I walk from the fire chief's office down the hallway into the kitchen. That's leadership. You walk in there and you engage your, your fire crew, you engage your personnel, and you start building a relationship with them. So that they understand who you are, they understand, I understand who they are. We understand what each member needs for, to be successful. And the leadership is the part of, of the firehouse where we empower each other. We build and work towards each other. So that when the opportunity comes at, at Railroad Street, the leadership is what's gonna make that be successful. The management is gonna be procedures that we follow, but the leadership is gonna be what makes it. And I think that's how I would define it, too.
Okay, what type of leader, leadership style would you say you have?
Uh, so, if you were to come to work with me and drive around in my little fire command truck. Uh, I have six fire stations that I have to deal with. And inside there are nine company officers. And inside there are forty-one people. Uh, the amount of leadership style that I have to use through the course of my day is probably enough to fill this, this entire table. Uh, at the end of my day, the two core values that I believe in is my thankfulness and my gratitude for the people who work for me. And my criticalness. I'm very, very grateful. I would be nothing as a fire chief. I would be nothing as a deputy fire chief if it wasn't for the people that work for me. They get my jobs done. They make my job easy. But at the same time, my job is to be very critical of what they do. We have a very, very important job. So I can be thankful for them. I can be respectful of what they do. But I also have to be very critical and analyze them and talk to them and encourage them to be better. No fire that we've ever been to, no medical emergency we've ever mitigated, nothing was done textbook. Without the opportunity of coming back to the firehouse to be critical of our skill, being critical of our operations. So that we can take ourselves and be better prepared for the next responsible, next response. So the core value of it, uh, very much gratitude to the people I work with and a very much a critical leader.
Okay, as a leader. If you had to list one thing you stood for, what would that be?
Respect.
As a leader, how do you make sure everyone in the organization knows what's expected of them?
Um, I think it's very important to be a truthful leader. Uh, and that is to establish relationships with everybody. They understand who I am. I understand who they are. Uh, very often in the fire service, I've been around the organization for a long time. We establish policies and procedures because they're reactionary in many ways. Sometimes those policies and procedures that we adopt don't necessarily meet the mission. And we've adopted policies and procedures that don't uh, meet our expectations. Uh, there are things that we've done that we thought were right. And then we have to adopt and come to them. So at the end of the day, I think you need to lead with, with cause. You need to lead with just reasons. And by explaining to the crew what is needed from them and understanding and communicating with them and engaging with them, I think you're able to accomplish those.
What advantages do you see in having an open and collaborative relationship with other department heads and outside agents?
Oh, I would say that that's probably one of the most important parts of my career to date. Um, I have friends in the fire service across the country. I have friends in the fire service across my region. Where I work in Southern Hampshire and I have friends in the fire service down here. Uh, I talked a little bit about preparation from a, a, a formal education standpoint. We talked a little bit about the experience that you need. The third part of that experience is the networking that the chief is talking about. Uh, because, and you get in the course of your day as a fire chief, you're gonna need. A different aspect of all of those things. And when your education isn't gonna be able to help you, and when your experience doesn't help you. You need to be able to have network to respond to, and report to, and, and collaborate with. I have communicated, uh, one of the, one of my very good friends is the fire chief in the city of San Diego. Um, they have a three hundred and thirty-five million dollar budget. They have two thousand employees. When I chat with him and engage with him on, on opportunities that we need, that they potentially have already done. The benefit of that collaboration that he's talking about is that we don't have to build something from the ground. We have the, the, the network and the resources to, to work with those folks. Um, so from an, an administrative standpoint, there's obviously a lot of good to that. From the operational standpoint, it's a small community. It's five firefighters working. So I know that when there's a fire near the town of Maynard. We're gonna be working very, very closely with the Concord Fire Department, the Severine Fire Department, and Snow Fire Department, the Akron Fire Department, and beyond. So you have to have a relationship with those folks because that's how we're gonna manage emergencies within this town and by engaging in those relationships and fostering them as best we can.
Okay, what about local, local departments within the, the town of Maynard?
Oh, local agencies within the town?
In addition, I mean.
Oh, yeah, so I, I think at the end of the day, the, the, the mission of the fire service is life safety. And that is accomplished with collaboration between the building department, co-enforcement department. Establishing proper zoning laws, coming to this board, uh, coming to the capital improvements committee, making sure they support our infrastructure needs. Um, the, the fire chief in the fire department is one piece of the wheel that makes the town of Maynard, makes any fire department, makes any community move forward. So those relationships are very, very important. We all have to share the responsibility of making this a vibrant, successful community. And being respectful of everybody's role in accomplishing the mission and accomplishing goals that the core of that. Is that, help me?
Yeah. What level of involvement have you had with budget creation and budget management?
Uh, so our budget in the National Fire Department is about thirty-two million dollars. Uh, ninety-four percent of that is salary and uh, benefits. Uh, the remaining portion is our operational budget. Uh, the way RP functions and the four deputy fire chiefs all have different areas of responsibility. My area of responsibility is basically two-fold. Um, I oversee the day-to-day operations of our hazmat team, which is our enterprise fund. Which basically ranges between sixteen hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that outfits our team and outfits our training and so on and so forth. Um, my other responsibility is budget acquisition. I mean, uh, not budget acquisition, uh, grant acquisition. Uh, I was tasked with grant acquisition about end of two thousand twenty-three. And that time I've written for six grants. I have been successfully awarded uh, three of them. Uh, one of them we were declined on, and I had two that are pending. Uh, and in that time, I've secured uh, just under eight hundred thousand dollars for grants for the fire department. Um, so those are my two areas of responsibility. And then collaboratively, when we meet as a group of, at probably staff meetings. The other chiefs bring in their parts, and then the chief coordinates putting everything together. So that's, that's my background with the budgeting aspect.
Okay. Share a professional experience you've had with the difficult employees that you supervise, how you handle this. What the outcome for the employee was and what the outcome for the department was.
Um. When I was promoted to rank captain, I was assigned to strip for a fire station that's in the southern part of our city. Uh, six weeks after I got there, they dropped off some excavation equipment. And we started a one point four million dollar renovation and expansion of a firehouse that was intended to be functioning for the entire eighteen-month project. Uh, inside that building were thirty-two firefighters, uh, thirty-one if you exclude me. Um. The fire department thought we were prepared for what we were going to do down there for this renovation and expansion and keeping the firehouse functioning. Uh, my task there was to be the administrator, the operational liaison for the construction group. Uh, we met weekly. I engaged with the crews how we thought was going to be the process. But it quickly became realized that as we expanded this construction process, the needs were not being met at the firefighters and the firehouse. We were trying to keep a firehouse functioning to protect the southern part of our city while we were completely overhauling this building. In pieces, moving it around and building this addition on the left side of it. Uh, it became very, very difficult. It became very confrontational. The guys weren't happy. They weren't working in a positive environment. And I was kind of the centerpiece between the people that I was supposed to be supporting inside the firehouse. And the administrative group that was overseeing the construction project, who worked downtown. Uh, so the conflict wasn't with one employee, the conflict was with all of them. And being the captain of that building, it was my responsibility to take all of their response, all of their questions and all of their needs. Uh, we met with them as much as we possibly could. We communicated with them. But in the eighteen months that this project ran, it became pretty obvious that if you think you're meeting the objectives of somebody, uh, you can only think that. They are the ones that will decide if you're meeting their objectives. It was difficult because the labor group wanted to have a say in the process. Administration was managing the project in a specific way, and I was the center point. I was a member of the labor group and I was a representative of the administration. Um, as we worked our way through it, we had to uh, respect each other's requests. Sometimes I couldn't grant the wishes that the membership had in the building. I had to bring those concerns to the administration. And sometimes I couldn't respect the request that the administration wanted. At the end of it, the lessons that we learned are probably the state of leadership. You need to communicate. You need to plan better. What you think is going to be the plan is never going to work because it's gonna be obstacles, it's gonna be hurdles. At the end of the day, we need to meet the needs of our people better. We failed in many ways during that project. And then over that eighteen months, uh, I, I became a better leader, a better communicator, and I think our fire department did. And if we were to do it again, the building would be shut down and will not be functioning for eighteen months.
Um, what are your thoughts on professional development, both for yourself and the department members?
Um, outside of your core firefighting skills, it's very easy to come back from the firehouse and uh. Feel as though you have what you need for skill, you have what you need for training, get into a routine of coming to the firehouse. Get your gear ready and your apparatus, respond to your calls. Um, it becomes almost a norm, a normalization, if you will, and not seek the education. I think the role of the fire chief is very much to empower the group to stay focused on our goals. I think that can be done in a couple of different ways. One, I lead by example. Um, I have always engaged myself in professional development opportunities. That's where a lot of the networking comes, the chief was talking about. I think one of the things you do is set objectives for your operational groups, for your firefighters, and we work together. Um, I think if you go over to the Maynard Fire Station and walk into that kitchen and you sit there and there's five people in that room. You start talking to them about what they need. You start talking to them about what their wants are. And then as the administrator of the fire department, you go out and seek those opportunities. And that's. Organization continues. Very easy to sit here and say, I have my firefighter certifications, my EMT certifications, and I'm good to go. Then all of a sudden, you've been there for ten years. When was the last time you took a class? Then you've been there for fifteen, still taking a class. And that's everybody's responsibility to motivate, motivate ourselves. And that's really where the evolution of the fire department comes to do it, right? If, if you were to Google fire service operations right now, one of the more talked about topics is electric vehicle fires. Four years ago, three years ago, we weren't even thinking about those things. Uh, one of my very, very responsive, the deputy fire chief was a Tesla wire fully involved. We haven't had one of those in the city at all, and we had to figure it out. Uh, guess what we've done? We've engaged in electric vehicle fire training. And we've taken seminars and we now have operational policy. And all that stuff's come through professional development.
Uh, mental health awareness has been glaringly important to the members of the fire service. How would you create an environment, in culture, in the Maynard Fire Department, for encourages?
Um. I'll give you a proper answer and I, I may end up taking more than my thirty-five minutes um, in total, but. Mental health in the fire service has hit the National Fire Department significantly hard. Um. Five years ago, I was coaching my son's baseball game and one of my best friends walked over to the fence. And told me that one of our recently retired members, Mickey Cass, had committed suicide earlier. Um, to say that was a shock to our organization, as it would be for any, is an understatement. I walked into my crew the next morning, and the firehouse, which is normally a very vibrant and exciting place to be, was absolutely silent. Nobody was talking, nobody was looking at each other. People were questioning what the heck was going on. Um. I walked in, I was the captain at the time, I walked in to my lieutenant and said, we've gotta have a discussion with the crew. I have no idea what this discussion is even gonna look like, or we're gonna have it. We walked into our day room and I said, guys, listen, there's no answers for what we're going through right now. I have no idea why it happened and nobody is probably ever gonna know why it happened. And we had what you start, what started as a very natural conversation that you would think would fall. And about halfway through the conversation, I took an opportunity to share with them a story that had affected me for the better part of four years. The fire service is a extremely difficult profession sometimes. I had responded to a, a call about five years earlier that resulted in the fatality of a three-year-old child as a result of a homicide. At that time, when that happened, we didn't talk about that stuff in the fire service. We're better now, but we didn't. And we went back to the firehouse and we continued on our day. And that situation ate at me and burned inside of me, to the point where I said, I don't know if I can even go back to the fire station anymore. I need to fix this. And I sat in my kitchen and I looked at my wife and she said, what is wrong with you? You're, what is, why, what is wrong with you? And I said, I don't know. I think, I think I'm struggling with work. I don't wanna be a fireman anymore. It started me on a four-year journey of therapy. And we didn't talk about it. Just like we didn't talk about the incident that occurred with the three-year-old, how it was impacting us. We didn't talk about the fact that I was seeking some help to understand why that happened, why I was there. And then we had to sit there and understand that Mickey Cass had committed suicide. And my crew didn't understand why this had happened. Nobody knew that he was struggling. Well, nobody knew I was struggling. And I shared with them that story of what I was going through. And forty-five minutes later, the crew walked up and we exchanged cups. And some of the conversation that we had there was incredible. And that's not where it starts. I sat with a guy that I had known in our department that was a military veteran and shared conversations with him privately. In the wake of this Lieutenant Nikki Cass's death, I looked at him and I said, I think we have to be better. I'm ready to share my story. And he said, I will if you do. And we took a piece of paper and we hung it all over the firehouse and it said, for the love of brotherhood, capital L. Come join us for pizza and remember what the brotherhood is. That was the poster. It went on the wall. We walked in the training room and fifty-two members showed up at the firehouse. And I shared with them the story that I had gone through for four years without telling a soul. Three and a half hours later, after fifty-two people share this story, they said, when can we do this again? And we did it again for about seven months until COVID reared its head and we shut down our program. Best thing I ever did for the fire service was share that story. Seven people came up to me after our first event. Until the time that we stopped because of COVID and said, because you share your story, I am getting better. Mental health and wellness in the fire service is significant. It's everywhere. And when you have the courage to talk about it and the courage to treat real, you can have an impact on your organization.
Thank you. Uh, as a new fire chief, there might be some presentation from, uh, the department when you're appointed. How would you approach this matter?
Yeah, it certainly can go unnoticed, someone outside candidate. Um, but I can tell you one thing that when I respond to a building fire or a medical emergency or a car accident, we have to activate somebody in any type of call in the city of Nashville. It is the same emergency that the professionals that are sitting in the firehouse in Sudbury should respond to in this community. I have twenty-six years of experience doing what they do. I will come to this fire department and I will earn their trust. The first day I will walk into that kitchen and I will sit down with them and we will engage in conversation and find out who I am and who they are. We will build trust. We will build relationships. We will build collaboration. I will take my experiences from the fire ground, from labor management, from personnel matters, to budgeting, to management. Operations, and I will put them all before us and I will build an environment that is centered on trust. When you can build it on, set it on track, I think we can be very, very successful. It's gonna be hard. I understand. A candidate that is an internal candidate, I met at the assessment center. There's no question in my mind why he is a candidate for this position. He's extremely well-equipped and he's well, well-prepared. And if the board were to appoint her, I wish her and the department the absolute best. I bring thirty-six, uh, twenty-six years of experience that I think are gonna be very, very valuable in the future of the Maynard Fire Department.
So you have a, you have plenty, you do have time left, you know?
I need good.
We do have some questions from the board.
Okay.
Fucking gather.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for joining us, deputy. The next few years are gonna test the financial management creativity of local governments and Maynard is no exception. Uh, please describe your experience or your ideas dealing with strained resources. And your ideas to contain and reduce costs while still maintaining, uh, adequate levels of service.
Well, I think one thing that we all have in our advantage here is the infrastructure of the Maynard Fire Department is absolutely solid. Uh, the project that was completed on Sudbury Street takes many municipalities years to accomplish. I don't know how long it took you folks, but I'm sure it was years. You did a great job. Uh, the work in the infrastructure of the fire apparatus, uh, there's one on order. The new ambulance that was ordered and delivered last year, uh, those are the significant items that all municipalities have to deal with. This town is in a very, very good spot with that. I think the direction and the future of the, of the fire department moving forward is on an operational level. I think we need to take the foundation that is there of our infrastructure and take our people that are in the Maynard Fire Department, our captains and our firefighters. And then build the structure around it. Operationally, we can do a lot of unique things inside of our, inside of our walls when they're solid. You know, the environment that was on Summer, on Summer Street, it's tough to work in that environment. You guys have created an incredible opportunity for this city, uh, for this town and for the firefighters up on Sudbury Street. And within that structure, I think it's gonna be a lot of opportunity to build off of each other. I think we can build things internally. There's going to be some cost to them, certainly. Uh, the Parker Street development brings a significant growth button to the town of Maynard. There are other factions within the town of Maynard where growth will exist. As you bring in growth, you will have to expand services in some way, shape, or form. We have to do them strategically. Uh, Chief Carroll questioned earlier, how do we function with all of the other department? Well, that's how we do it. We have to understand the needs of the assessing department, the police department, the school department, and the streets department. And everybody's gonna have a little say in it. And then you work together collaboratively with the administrator and build what the future looks like from a budgetary standpoint. You're not gonna probably get everything you need realistically. But you have to prioritize things and you have to build things working towards it. So I think a solid view of what the future looks like. And an understanding of what the overall financial impact and needs of the town are, fire department has been served very, very well in the past several years. From a big cost money item, I think the firehouse was what, fifteen million dollars or something?
That's below.
They did, they kept it up. That's a lot of money. Uh, and the fire apparatus is, is, is a million dollars. Um, so the, the, the financial impact of the fire department has been over the past several years was significant in that pie. Now you have to understand what the other organizations are needing. So we have had a realistic expectation as the fire chief that we've had our share. Now we need to be able to focus on smaller responsibility to serve the, the community as best we can with what we have while maintaining some growth. And understanding what we're working towards, but be patient in getting there. Is that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The question that I have to ask has been, you've more or less answered it because it was, um. In relation to experience with writing grants and obviously, you know, through your answers earlier in the, um. So far as, um, you know, what, what you've done in the departments, um, and your resume, you have experience writing grants. I don't know if you want to elaborate on, you know, a strategy for grant writing or any particular grants that, you know, um, you'd like to mention?
Yeah, so I think one of the, one of the most important things with the grant process is when you write a grant, you better be prepared to accept the grant. Um, the first grant I wrote for was for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was for a comprehensive health and wellness program for our fire department. It was the last of five steps of our. Planned out process that took about eight years to build and we were gonna bring in a company called O two X to provide thirty-two hours of fitness and wellness and. Sleep training and health training to all of our members. Um, the match on was sixty-five thousand dollars. I was asked to write the grant. We went out, wrote the grant. We got a word of the grant. Here's your letter from FEMA congratulating. Everything's going well. We didn't accept it then. So probably the most important strategic part of planning is putting all of that effort into writing the grant for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which is a significant amount of money. We were gonna go over five thousand four hundred hours of training for our people for sixty-five thousand dollars of local commitment. Because of the needs of the fire department, as we started looking forward, we needed engine company operations done, ladder company operations done, professional development programs, officer development program. There was so much on the plate, there was no place to put this stuff. So the most important takeaway for me in my time writing grants right now would be strategic in what you do. Don't just write grants because the grant window was open. Because at the end of the day, we've gotta come to you folks and say, well, there's a map for this. It's sixty-five dollars. Oh, we got it. Good, great, thanks. Oh, but we have no place in our operational, uh, calendar to fit this thing. So we've got all this money and we've got nothing to do with it. So the grant writing process, I think, is just, you know, goes back to your core values of your educational background. You can write a grant, anybody can write a grant if they put their mind to it. But doing it in a strategic manner so that it fits in the needs of the fire department. Uh, it's harder to write a grant for that much money and then not be able to accept it. But it's what the situation we're in, I've part of the agreement, uh, to not accept it. So, um. I know it doesn't specifically relate to your writing, but it's probably the more important part of it, of being strategic in your, your vision of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What level of experience do you have? I know you mentioned a little bit in your resume, uh, regarding collective bargaining and labor relations.
Uh, so I have been a member of I F F Local seven eighty-nine since I joined the fire department. When you get promoted to the rank of deputy fire chief, you are outside of the labor group. I still pay my dues. Uh, I wholeheartedly support the mission of the I F F. I wholeheartedly support the mission of, of the mission of the labor movement on that side. Um, my role in the labor side, uh, I served as a station steward for four years. I served on the executive board at the Stewart Large for two terms. Um, I, we came into my term as we were concluding the negotiation of one collective bargaining agreement. And then I sat through the process of, here are all of our ideas, hundreds of them, uh, and we sat as a labor group and they all make sense. Okay, so we had to sit there and go through that and, 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 and call it down to thirty or forty. And then go sit with, uh, management and negotiate our needs and go through the whole process. You guys know full well what that is. Uh, so I've been there for the product. These are our ideas all the way through. Here's a printed copy of our collective bargaining agreement and the thing that we were discussing and now in there. I promote up, I'm on the, the management side. Uh, our collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters union expired on the thirtieth of this year. So, um, three, four weeks ago, we sat as a management group and went through the collective bargaining agreement. And guess what we did? We came up with ideas just from a different perspective. Uh, so now we did the same thing on the other side. Uh, we went through the contract and we've identified the areas of concerns that we have that we need to address to help the operations of the fire department go forward. And the end of the day, all it is, is, is the labor group and the management group working together. Uh, all of our ideas are not gonna be accepted. All of their ideas are not gonna be accepted. But we go through the process. Um, I was very, very fortunate, very lucky to be on the labor group, uh, in an executive board capacity and working towards those things. And I think I'm very, very lucky now to be on the administrative side, working again towards making the fire department better, do that collaborative better.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So deputy, we have, uh, these are, next couple of questions are more situational.
Okay.
Um, you have a house fire and you see one of your firefighters take some jewelry off a dresser. And stuff, stuff it in their pocket. What would you do?
Uh, I gotta be honest with you, that's probably the most hell-tale. Ethics question that's ever asked in any interview from our firefighters. And I just was on our role board for, uh, our hiring. We did seventy-four interviews. And they all give you the same question. Firefighters, don't deal, stop, don't lie, steal, or cheat. Uh, the, the, the base of the matter, the community of Maynard allows us to come into their homes and trust us without knowing who we are. Other than that, we're representatives of the fire department. We have a pack in our sleeve and a bag in our chest. They don't ask who we are. They just ask us to come in and help them. Uh, that is a very, very sacred piece of trust that you have to maintain. A firefighter is, in my view, doing that. Fact of the matter is, if you're taking something off, uh, a dresser that is not yours and a trucky fire. You are not securing us for that person by putting it in your pocket. Uh, I've been doing this for twenty-six years. I understand how things work when we're salvaging and protecting people's property and that's not how we do it. Uh, so at the end of the day, uh, go back to that value of we don't steal, lie, or cheat. One person is gonna effectively turn that operation in Sudbury Street and our twenty-two members, but our all members, I think there are six. Our just under thirty members of the fire department, we're all gonna have that advantage. Uh, it can't be tolerated.
So what would you do?
We would investigate, talk to the gentleman, ask him to explain himself. I would then make the decision that I thought was best based upon his response. Uh, do you want to, give me your perspective of what his response might be?
Oh, that's fine. I just.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I would, I would investigate. It can't be tolerated. Let's have the investigation. Let's have the discussion. See where things are at. Uh, the trust of the community supersedes everything else we have going on here. So if you can't give me a viable answer as to why you're doing such a thing, you're probably getting some time off. Uh, and we can gotta go from there.
Uh, the town administrator has asked you to implement something, uh, the union is very opposed to. How would you work to get the firefighters on board?
Well, it goes back to our conversation a few minutes ago. Uh, the labor management relation is not always smooth. Uh, I, as a fire chief, work for the Board of Selectmen. I, as a fire chief, work collaboratively with the firefighters union to meet their needs and objectives. Uh, my mission of the, of, of the role of fire chief is to ensure that the fire department's operating, functioning, operating and functioning and moving forward. Uh, if the directive is coming from the Board of Selectmen, you said, correct?
The town.
Oh, the town administrator, I'm sorry. We are. So if the directive is coming from the administrator and it fits into the needs of the fire department. Uh, we, we need to work to do that. That being said, I believe the position is a strong key. Uh, within that statute, the fire chief has the authority to do what's best for his organization. So just like I have to engage with the labor body and understand their concerns and need, I have to engage with the manager and understand what he is. And then I have to facilitate, just like the conversation in our collective bargaining, take what the manager, uh, the administrator needs, take where the labor group is on. I make the decision and we move forward. Uh, hopefully I meet his objectives. Hopefully I meet their needs. We'll make the decision, we'll move forward, and we'll continue to talk about it moving forward, and we'll continue to talk to the labor group moving forward. That's all you can do.
This is my last question. Um, okay, many interested in extremely well-qualified and experienced candidates for this position. Why should the town of Maynard hire you for this position?
Um, I'm gonna come back to the thing I had stated earlier. To be successful in this business and to be successful as fire chief, you have to prepare yourselves in three ways. Formal education, experience, and professional development. I have the formal education. I have an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and I've graduated from the executive fire office program. I have the experience. I've been in the city of Nashville for twenty-two years. We go on twelve thousand emergency of the year. I command, uh, thirty-eight, uh, thirty-seven firefighters on my shift. Uh, I worked as a lieutenant in one of the busiest cities in the city. We were doing twenty runs a day. When I got promoted to lieutenant, I had the option of going up the line or going into the training safety division. I toured the training safety division. I had never done that before. I wanted the opportunity to see what it was like to develop training programs for a department of a hundred and eighty-five members, and that's what we did. When I was assigned to the role of captain, saw falls out of the experience part, right? When I was assigned to the role of captain. The Spickford Road renovation project didn't go smoothly. Standing down on the Spickford Road today is a beautifully renovated firehouse. Everybody, ninety-nine percent of the people are happy with the end result of that project. We're never gonna get everybody on board. Uh, when COVID hit our department, like yours, we weren't prepared for it. Our fire administration asked me to join the incident management team. I did so when I was assigned as the planning section chief. We had no plans for anything like that, as nobody did. In three days, I developed an operational plan to pick our five functions of our fire department suppression, prevention, training, safety, communications, and mechanical. Hundred and eighty-five people downed the functions where all we had left was one person answering the telephone and four people on a fire truck responding to whatever call we could. The entire plan in between there. And it triggered down, all the way down to the point where we, we used, um, targets and triggers. And we got to the point where we had to manage it. Um. Recently, projects that I've worked on, we had a engine company operations manual that had been staged and developed us. Uh, stalled in development for the better part of five years. Wasn't going anywhere. Chief asked me to come in. We need this thing done. In about two months, we wrapped the project up. A lot of the work was done. We developed it forward. Uh, last week, we put in place an SOP on after-action incident reviews. We had a structured fire in the neighboring community. Our company went over there, firefighter fell through the floor, a mayday was spelled. The guys came back, questions, what going on? We didn't have a program on this. So I developed a seven-tier after-action incident review that is now operational procedure in our fire department. So we can take it from firefighter gets hurt, there's a document that will tell us how it did. Air pack doesn't work in a fire, there's a document to tell you, to tell us what happened. Firefighter goes to the floor, review the incident. Firefighter is critically injured, take this report, write it. Uh, professional development. The networking that we have in the fire service is incredible. You have to have all three of those pieces to be successful in this job. I think if you look at my resume, if you review what I've said to you this evening, uh, I am a prepared candidate. The education, the experience, and the, and, and the professional development puts me in a position to be very disturbed in the Maynard Fire Department.
Just about, uh, down to board, have any follow-up questions?
Um, am I mandated to ask the same question, the one question about the, uh?
I don't exactly remember what.
It was media-related. Um. Yeah, um. I predicated the question earlier, uh, to the previous candidate relative to the tragedy in Duxbury, Massachusetts, which I'm sure you're aware of.
Yeah.
Um, national story. Um, and Duxbury is a relatively small town, bigger than Maynard, but relatively small town. What is your experience in dealing with the media, especially, uh, anything of this magnitude? Where there is national media or huge media attention on a major story in your community and how do you deal with it?
Yeah, so I, I, in the, in the following, and the chief said, uh, Rob Reardon is the new fire chief down there. Uh, Rob Reardon teaches. At the national level. At the national level on social media and how a fire department can engage in relationships with the media. To your point, the Duxbury Fire Department, I think, has two fire stations and there might be seven firefighters on ship. It's a very small place. But Rob Reardon is seen on CNN, on MSNBC, on the Today Show, uh all over the place. Because Rob Reardon has taken a very proactive approach in establishing relationships with the media. Uh, I think that's how you do it. You have to engage your media partners and Rob Reardon is an example of how you do that. Um. The thing that the Duxbury Fire Department excluding from the tragedy that occurred would be the face of weather-related emergencies in New England. And serving on the 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 Weather Channel is a testament to what he has done. That's how you engage your media. They become partners for you, no different than when we're talking about the the agencies within the organization here in the town of Maynard. You have to do the same thing with them because it's your story that has to get told. It's the fire department's story that has to be told. If you don't control how it's being told, somebody's going to tell it for you. And the relationship that you have with those folks is going to allow you to be the one to make sure that you steer that conversation in the direction that it goes. Uh, one of the exercises that we did at the assessment center was just that, a mock uh press conference. Uh, I've done that on a few occasions in my role as deputy fire chief, for instance, that I wasn't even working on. But you take the information that's provided for you and you 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 go and speak to the media and you do the best that you can. Because they're going to share that story one way or the other. If you don't get that information to them, they're going to, they've got a deadline to meet. They're gonna be on the TV. Uh, and if you follow the Duxbury model and and the work that Rob Reardon has done there, uh, there's a lot of success going on in in how he's done things. Uh, he goes to the FDIC uh conference in Indianapolis, which is the fire department infrastructure conference, and he teaches on film comedian. That conference in his presentation, Southout, every single you can't even get in the room. And and he's the fire chief of Duxbury Mass, which is a very, very small organization because he took this initiative. He had this education, he had this experience. And and he did something. He's setting the example for a lot of fire chiefs uh in New England and around the world. Or not the world, maybe the world, but let's start with the United States.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So we're out of time.
Okay.
Um, do you have, just we have time. Is there one question?
No, I don't have a question, but I I just wanna uh reiterate, I appreciate the process that uh Chief Powell has run here. Uh, it's been quick. Uh, I was looking over my stuff today. The submission of my cover letter was uh one month ago today, so the whole process moved fairly quickly. I appreciate the communication that the chief did. Um, the board had a very, very important decision to make tonight. Uh, I wish you the best of luck in your discussion, making that decision. As I stated earlier, uh, I had an opportunity to talk to Captain Wallace at the assessment center. I wish her the very, very best if he gets the opportunity. Um, I bring to you a a significant amount of experience, a considerable amount of passion. And an admirable uh interest in serving the role of fire chief. Uh, if you so were to choose me, um, I would assure you that it would be a decision that you would uh be grateful you'd take and in the year to come.
I have to, I can't let go without asking questions. I couldn't, I didn't, I didn't.
You writing?
No.
Hey, listen, so in psych com, okay, from us talking downstairs, I said, you're gonna tell me you're writing.
So, so I said, you have to ask one question. Ask me one question you have to ask for.
One question that this would, so when I played Pop Warner football against New York over here.
Yes.
Back in nineteen ninety-two.
Yes.
Why was it feeling like that?
Whoa.
Slow down the aggression.
I mean, we came from Chelmsford all the way down from ninety-five, ready to rock and roll. We walked in there, the grass is about this big. You couldn't even see the. Nineteen eighty-nine kills.
That's why.
Our practice, our practice in the deep grass, and we know the other kids don't.
We're gonna. That was the first time I ever ever come to Maynard. We played a football game over here. And uh, my family had a house in York Beach, Maine, and uh there were friends up there that lived in town. They came, I don't know.
Yeah, it's still here.
Um, but.
It's still there too.
But but we came here and uh we played, and it was the first time I ever come to Maynard. We have to go all the way to Maynard? Do we have to go to hotel? Uh, come to find out, it's only fifteen minutes out of the road, so it was all good. Does that work for your question?
That is, that works.
All right, that's good. Well, deputy, on behalf of the town, thank you very much for your uh your interest in the position and uh in your service, what you do every day.
I appreciate it, chief. Thank you again for the process and best of luck to you guys as you uh finish your meeting and debate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. You keep the resumes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a evening.
You too. Thank you.
So you don't have any questions for me? I'll answer first, yes.
You have any questions?
No.
No questions. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you very much for your support and the opportunity. Those things going out the door and and the town administrator was very good to work to with. We had a a lot of good conversations. And I think we were able to develop a assessment center that um was very unique and and fitted to the town of Maynard, so. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I wish you the best of luck in your process.
Thank you. All right, so. So two great candidates. Um, they.
Couldn't be any different.
Correct. That is correct. Uh, so I'm I'm just gonna go down the line and see how people felt. We'll go from there. We'll go up.
Chris, do you want to start?
I mean, I'm fine. I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't think we would go wrong with either candidate. Um, and um, my only concern with second candidate is, is this gonna be enough? So a question that we asked commonly, is he gonna be, is he gonna be content to be here in this small apartment with all of our friends that he does? On his resume and all the things that, you know, his education and everything suggests, um, you know, not that. Not to, not to sell Maynard short, but I mean, is 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 seven people gonna be enough to satisfy his his uh first for that job? I don't know what it is. I don't know what it is. And I also was. I also had two concerns in in the process of the answering the question. And one was, I have a question on the stick. Uh, thinking about a difficult employee, we didn't talk about any employee. We talked about a fire station that he um supervised the uh on-site building departments. And they were difficult, but didn't discuss a individual um employee or how you handle an individual individual employee with a problem at that point. And my my second concern and my largest concern actually was the answers to the question number eight about mental health. Uh, mental health and wellness is is huge in every industry and every and every aspect of all of our lives right now. And um, you sit in this room and answer that question by saying you had a pizza party to discuss the suicide or something else. The meaning that just, really? I mean, you know, that's that's your answer to mental health and mental wellness, uh, mental health and wellness around it. I I just think there was no mention of. A a a process with an outside entity to assist you, um, you know. Even in here, we have, we have, we have a a person in the police department who does that. We have a person in schools who does that. We have several people in the fire department. Based on um Captain Wallace's answers, it are there to assist and it to not suggest answering that question that there was any assist take assisting offered. It's mind blowing to me that that's that there was the answer to that question. That's so, you know, those are my concerns. Um. I really, I really didn't have those type of concerns with the um. Answers given by Captain Wallace and and my my overriding concern is that this is not gonna be enough of a job to keep his interest here, to keep him here long-term. And then we're right back down the same same um path again, looking for another chief and, you know, do in 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 that time. Because she doesn't get this job, is there's a a a good candidate for the chief leave? And we have to, you know, go somewhere else and find a whole new set of candidates. It's a concern to me and um. I think that um, you know, to his point and to her point both, that we're in a good place at the Maynard Fire Department. Captain Wallace has been a huge part of us getting to a good point and and by the fact that she did stand in and act as our chief last year. And there were no problems and she picked up the um leadership on several different things, most of the material in that role. And I personally, she would be my choice. And I'd like to see her, you know, given the opportunity to finish what her and she started, started in Maynard and where we're we're successful. Um, in our own minds because of a lot of her contributions. And I just think that is a is a big part of um why I would, I would look to um. Make her my select and and as well as the fact that the um, you know, the union members in the union um often disapprove of her as well. Which is huge in this um, this time of the day, this day and age. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I um, I don't know if if necessarily the size of our department or whatever would be a bother. Because fires firefighting, we've heard from Chief Stowers and from others, firefighting is firefighting, where, you know. Uh, whatever, but I get the point that um, you know, I think you mentioned they have like, I I forget the exact number of calls that they make from his one department. Probably is more than what our people do uh in a given day. And that's for our retired department, let alone just one area, decent staff. But anyway, um. So I I don't know if that's necessarily a a concern for me, although uh. The dynamic of presentation is where I sort of focused on. Um, what's the best fit for our community? What's the best fit for our people, our residents? Um, and what our, how I feel our residents react to particular leadership styles. And I think that our community is more in line with the leadership style that was exemplified by Captain Wallace. And um, it seemed almost, and I don't mean this in a negative way that it'll come out, but more compassion. Uh, more uh person-to-person, more uh individualized. Um, and and more uh, you know, down to earth. Uh, I think Maynard has a unique perspective on life, perspective on each other, perspective on community. And I think Captain Wallace, in her presentation, exemplified that and reflected that. And I think that she would bring that type of style to the fire department. Um, you know, when we went through the police, the chief is here, the police chief is here. And when we went through the process, the police chief. Uh, the last time, I think I felt the same way, looking for, um, you know, what fit the community. When we went through the fire chief selection, the last time, I think I was the only one that was on the board at the time. But it was the same thing. At that point, we needed, we needed a new direction, but we needed somebody that would have a style that would fit. And Chief Stowers thankfully did. So that's where my focus went is on style and fit to the community and how an individual would match what we need. And I would support Angela Wallace, um, Captain Wallace, based on her presentation for that reason.
Beth, excuse me. Um, I think I I think you're pretty aligned with with both of you. I did want to revisit um as far as um question eight. I want to clarify um regarding the mental health wellness. Um, I do think what that, what he was saying was outside of anything else they were doing, that he did bring other people together to to share in in a situation that. Um. Firefighters aren't normally willing to do. So um, so I do, I I want to give credit where credit is due there. Um, I did have the same concern regarding, um, not a concern, it's just a difference in leadership style. And I feel like I, his, his answer of the um, you know, he he his leadership style is one, you know. I I actually don't think I wrote it down, but it's, it's something and then it's, and then it's critical as well.
Yeah.
Um.
Gratitude.
Gratitude and critical, grat- grateful, grateful of your employees, absolutely, but critical. And I understand, I think I understand the. The intent of that, which is that you always want to be looking to improve. But I don't think that that style uh would be. Very receptive for a new chief walking in the door on day one. I think that will be something. If you happen to have that style and you're already the internal candidate and your your um, and your members know you. Then they might be more receptive to that because they'll get a chance to, they'll get a chance to adjust to that. But I think for a new fire chief walking in the door to have that already as an admitted style, it could be a challenge for any fire department, to be honest. Uh, so I do, I I was impressed with um. With Captain Wallace's answers about community, getting community involved. I have some ideas of of great things that, you know, hopefully that the the fire department can partner with as well. Um, and I would support her um as fire chief as well.
Well, then I will be prepared to make a motion.
Go for it.
I'm waiting to second it.
Uh, my motion would be that the.
You're the only one here.
You'll have to help, you'll have to help if I mis- mislead it, but I would make a motion to uh.
That's at the top.
Oh, it is. Uh, I would make a motion to select uh Captain Angela Lawless as the proposed fire chief to be appointed. Authorizing the town administrator to negotiate an employment agreement on behalf of the selectmen.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, I just, you know, I know that they probably both will see this and just, you know, thank them both for their um, their time and effort and energy.
Absolutely.
Both presentations were great in a lot of ways.
Mm-hmm.
Thank them both.
No, I agree. I agree. Thank you. All right, all in favor? All right. Greg, you have your direction.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Captain Lawless.
Don't screw it up. Uh, you know. That's why you were stepping now.
Stephanie doesn't screw it up.
Yes, Steve.
But thank you both too for all your hard work and getting us here with um, you know, with with everything that we've done so far, including um, you know. The gentleman who's here earlier.
It it is a great opportunity, you know, us as members of the board. Um, I'm very proud of the fact that, you know. Chief here and the fire chief, the departing fire chief and prior police chief. And the uh, and, you know, the changes that we've been able to make through selection process and being able to be part of that. Uh, and the influence that it has on our community is is really amazing. And um, you know, for me, it's humbling to have been able to be part of. Um, you know, developing our community in this way. And and I I really think that we've seen over the course of. The last fifteen years, the change in Maynard and the change in the professionalism. Not that they weren't professional before, but there's a new direction, a new change. That's a great thing and we should be proud of ourselves as a board for having been involved in this. And I think, you know, uh, Captain Wallace is gonna be fabulous as the new chief.
Yes, I want to thank everybody for the process as well. I really appreciate all the time and effort and expediency. I think that's a fastest we got anything on, so that that is fantastic. So thank you, Beth. Thank you uh to Jack Carroll, the consultant. Uh, we really appreciate everything you've done. All right, now turning back to the regular meeting.
Number seven.
Number seven, a reserve fund transfer request, uh, because apparently fuel costs money.
Yeah, so that's true. So um. Right, probably unsurprising to the majority of people that have to buy fuel these days, the depression in the US. So our finance director, Roy, for first, of course, that progress for certain transfers is submitted, if if possible, ahead of time. So if we if we have a certain amount of uh projection that we're gonna be overspending, whatever they count, in this case, fuel. Um, her reference would be enforced for the department's certain transfer requests to cover those costs before we overstep. So in this case, it's fifty thousand dollars. I had asked a question to Director of Public Works, Justin Markle, like how confident he was that it was gonna get us there. Um, he's incompetent, probably as he could, you know, fifty thousand dollars, obviously is. Uh, it should get us once in a while. And again, I heard the purpose of of the public's awareness. Um, this isn't just the force department, this also is cruisers, um, and you know, the the town peoples. This is, and and the pump is not, you know, for the public. Went to street garage, so this is our.
So I just, I'm just following up quickly. Um, I'm wondering if you happen to know what the fuel budget is?
By my head, I do not, no.
I'm gonna look.
He did he, he may have put it in the reserve fund.
Uh, did?
So the current balance, um, right now is twenty-seven thousand.
Just on on a uh, uh, point of order per se. Um, my understanding of reserve fund transfers is it does not require an approval of what's left.
That's true.
Go to the finance committee. It only requires that it be reviewed by the board of selectmen. So the fact that we have a motion to approve it is sort of out of order. Because we don't approve reserve fund transfer requests. We only uh review them and refer to the finance committee for their approval.
That's right.
They're the ones that have the authority to approve it or deny it, not the selectmen.
So I suppose if you did, did not approve this, I could still submit it.
Correct. It's all has to be, that's correct. It's all has to be reviewed by. Board needs to note that it was told that it was going to the finance.
But I prefer just to kind of.
So it's similar to articles that we put. We're accepting it and we're folding it on.
Correct, yeah. The real authority rests with, and it's not just because you're here, Madam Chair, but. Uh the real authority for the reserve fund transfer, the rest would be finance.
Yeah, that's true.
All right. All right.
I would not be happy without our knowledge.
So looking quickly, if I'm looking at the correct line item under facilities, it's sixty two thousand dollars is what we allocate. Yeah, the original budget, yep. Um so I will again plug the fact that our amazing town accountant does uh put. The expenditure report online, so you can read that up. But anyway, um does anyone have any questions? All right, so. Uh I will accept a motion to refer this to the finance.
Move to approve and refer the Department of Public Reports. We come to have a public work reserve fund transfer request as presented in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to the FinCon.
Second.
On paper. Fantastic. All right. Thank you, thank you. Uh next we have the, uh we're revisiting, it's general discussion at this point, uh revisit revisiting the. Broker services for one summer street, the old fire station. When we last met, uh we had reviewed the marketing proposal and uh one of the directions from the board was to. Uh go back to O'Brien to see if they would consider adding a named exceptions clause to the proposal. Uh I believe Assistant Administrator Zamudo did that, uh spoke to them. Um and they uh they declined that because they had also had reduced their rate also. So um they considered that part of their negotiation um and they wouldn't be able to. Because of the proposals is already reduced rate, um they are unable to offer the inclusion language. The inclusion language. Exclusion, it says inclusion. The inclusion of that language. Correct. All right. So as of right now, the proposal still stands, the contract still stands as voted on. And I just want to make sure we want to continue. You know, we did ask, there's their um. Not. You know, they don't want to to do that. So the question is, do we still move forward with the contract?
It's been voted um for for this, so the world knows. Um Megan and I did speak to, what's his name, Luke? We spoke to Luke because Luke was very concerned about my comments. And you know, I explained to him what my concerns were and that, you know, uh when the question was asked, the answer was no. And that was a one word answer, basically. And um so we had a conversation about that with Megan and I and. And I explained my opinion of that answer um and the fact that it's wrong. You know, it 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 does exist and it is possible. They just didn't want to do it in this case. And he explained. And and to Megan and I on the phone, his uh, his company's stance and their their thing. And if he had given that answer to us. The night of the conversation, I told him this, I said, if you had answered the question that way, the night that we had the conversation in this room. You would have a four nothing vote in your favor and there would have been no questions except, but I just did not appreciate the way he answered the question number one and the fact that. The the answer to the question and correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, is it's essentially, it was wrong because they they do exist. And they could have done it, but they just didn't want it. So we had that conversation. I told him that I would in no way. And in their way of um, you know, whatever they do, and if there's anything that they. Anything that I can give to um offer to the process, no problem. Happy to help in there. That was the end of the conversation.
Okay, all right. Thank you for, thank you for following. Uh David.
My concern after Chris raised his concern um was it it is um troubling that. Of these awful uh the three that. Uh if one of those three gets this uh gets this bid, we lose out on potential uh revenues. Coming to us because we have to pay this four percent premium. But um Jeff asked the question, well then why did you vote for it? And the reason I voted for it was because I wanted us to be able to have. An opportunity to reach out further than just three usual suspects. And have the possibility of having somebody perhaps from North Dakota. I don't know how far they'll reach, but. You know, from somewhere that has some unique perspective that we otherwise would never have had an opportunity to uh. To explore and to get um uh, you know, on board with us. So for that reason, I'm fine with using them. I'm disappointed that if we, if I will be disappointed if we go with one of the, if we. End up on three usual suspects and we lose out on that uh that potential revenue, but that's the risk we're taking. To have an opportunity to go beyond our normal stretch.
Okay, all right. So the general direction is to continue as. No action. Um I actually, uh correspondences, can we revisit that for one second? I had one question about uh the ever-source printing plan. Uh I know in the past that, you know. There has been, there have been instances in town where ever-source kind of they they're, they're doing what they have to do because they're clearing. The contractors are clearing the trees away from the wires, but sometimes the way that they clear them doesn't seem to be. In the best interest of the town as far as the way it looks visually. Um so I'm just wondering if, do they check in with? Justin and um or can he, can they get some kind of guidance regarding some of the trimming that they'll be doing? I just wanna, I know we had a.
I think you're right. Sometimes they don't even necessarily try and home over, but.
Yeah, and.
They definitely don't, because I had several years ago, uh I had a situation where they came and cut. And my kids called me up crying because our tree looks terrible. It looks fine now, but literally they called me at work crying.
Yeah, I, and again, I don't know if it's something that can be done, but I know I remember it happening a couple of years ago um on another street. And it was kind of like when they went down the street, they uh they didn't really leave much of the tree. Right, exactly. You know, so I don't know if there's a way, but you know, I figured it's worth bringing up.
I I, of course, it's a good question to ask and and I I suspect I know the answer.
It's okay, at least ask. All right, um so then we will move on to the acceptance of minutes. So we have minutes from January seventeenth.
So I will move to, I'm gonna just read what's written, accept and uh. Uh accept and approve the meeting minutes, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as shown.
All right, all in favor? Any discussion, sir? No, excellent, very good. Fantastic. Uh then we'll continue on and we will uh talk about the municipal naming policy. We've been, we've seen this a couple of times. Um and this is kind of just a, you know.
There, so there was, so the last time um this brought to the board, I think he was new manager that had asked for the consideration to um. Change uh kind of like the target group of these names. So I I think um the original memo, and I can read it, but I think it's. It emphasizes um the need to recognize veterans, which is of course important. I think the board would deny that. But I think you had asked, like, is. Possible to do some of these side specialties? And yeah, and so um I took a stab at at a, at just a couple of revisions. It doesn't remove the veterans at all. It just adds a couple of other categories per se that that the board could consider. And but but the kind of, to the context of the board and public, it's a, it's not just that the. The a couple of the highlights of potential changes for the board to consider is approval of the newspaper posting department. Because it's just not really how we do the business or the system anymore. And then um. Remove the public hearing requirement because that's a legal term, which means that which also goes in and newspaper postings. And what was it? Oh, and then and then I I recommend adding um a requirement to describe project details. So uh David Marks did a good job of of signaling, here's his recommended names, but he said, and by the way. We can build this sort of sign, this is how we can do it. Um but that was the requirement in the also impacted, like go to that level of detail. I'm sure we would, and I'm sure the board would ask, but it's it's probably good practice to put it in. So I I think manager, I didn't have a motion because I didn't expect the board to vote on this this evening because because this is a slightly newer version from the board's team. So if you have any questions um or any other further visions or what have you, but unless, I I don't expect the board to vote this. Yeah, the board usually likes to sort of put it out there, so to speak.
No, absolutely. Um I appreciate the updates that you've done to this. Uh anybody have any?
I think they were good, you know. Things have certainly changed insofar as the papers, hearings, all that stuff.
Yeah, and it's still, there's still a thirty day public comment period, still a, you know, so there is time for people to weigh in. Still time to notify people of, you know.
The websites are very good, right?
Absolutely. Um nice website.
We can use pictures, by the way.
All right, all right. Uh and David, how are you? All right, um we will hold off on approving it tonight, but we'll just put it on the agenda for the next. I'm sure that agenda is getting a little packed. You know, we did have um. You know, we we had a number of things that we actually had to push um from this agenda to the next one, just just to let. You and the public know. Um we worked hard to try to get everything in, but again, like I said at the beginning of this, it's the first time we've had to interview. Um fire chiefs. Uh originally, we thought we were going to have three candidates, so we needed at least. An hour and a half just to get through those parts of the interviews. So we appreciate the public's uh patience with, you know, um us having to push some stuff off. Um we we apologize. We do try to get to everything in a timely manner. Um so, so that. I just wanted to throw that out there as well. Uh Green Metal Building Committee, I think that is me. So um so the MSBA update. We've had a very robust meeting last Monday. It was about two and a half hours. Uh it is online. It is, it was recorded. Uh there was a lot of conversation. Uh the the Sustainability Committee has made. Several requests of the building committee. And so uh the OPM and the designer and the. Building committee chair and others have been working through the requests to try to see whether those um are requests that. Can be met, will be met, want to be met, um or just aren't going to be met or, or you know. Um so we're we're just, everybody's working through that um. Through the, throughout the process since the December sixth meeting, um it almost feels like that. Remember the February surprise meeting? You know, that when everyone talks about the 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 February surprise for the budget meeting, remember that? Like it's, that's how, I know, but that's how, that's how this is being referred to now. Everyone's referring to it as the December sixth meeting, so I just had to. Acknowledge that. So but ever since then, um you know, I have been working um. With, you know, I, as well as others, have been working with the OPM, the designers, um Brian, Greg. The building committee chair, Justin DiMarco, um really kind of working through the numbers, the cost drivers. Value engineering opportunities that are available at this point. Um you know, there are going to be value and there are going to be things for us to consider. Uh for for the building committee to consider. We're uh meeting again on Monday, the thirteenth and. Um and and we'll really look at what we've, what we've gotten through to this point. Um and then from there, they're going to continue, you know, the designers are going to continue with what getting the schematic design together. After it is um voted on in April and then submitted. If it is vote, if it is approved, it, there'll still be opportunities for value engineering as well. And I think, you know, in the. Earlier days, I did not understand that processes as well as I, as well as I wanted to. Um my biggest concern for this town is uh value engineering and cost of this, of the overall school. Um cost of operation, all of it. So um I'm really emphatic about making sure that we have the, you know. The best school we can afford. Um but the OPM and the designers have over, especially over the last couple of months. Have heard that message loud and clear as well. Uh and they're look, you know, and they know that we're looking for a solid school building. Um and one that the town can be proud of for many years to come. Um and that that, you know, we have a lot of stakeholders involved and and we're looking to um, you know, engage and and. Hopefully. Hopefully come to some compromises and uh and and move this project forward. So that's where I'm at, at the moment.
Thank you for the update.
Absolutely. Um not administrator report.
Thank you, manager. Um. Vegas Muto is submitted her resignation as the, as the board already recognizes correspondence and her last is March second. She is going to the town of Concord, but I don't want to talk about.
You're proud to announce?
I am proud to announce it. I am very proud of her. She knows that and 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 I was grateful for her. He is a major resident. She started on the on the. Um and uh she was ambitious enough to apply for this. She is really um taking the ball to me and I'm very, very. I can name a couple of really big highlights. I know she very, very particularly proud of like the operating plan. And um really like, really helping the the town, the economy maybe get past COVID, the height of COVID. Um and mostly on her own shoulders. So um Concord got, gets a good one out of Megan.
You should see the press release and give them.
Me, ours is also retiring. Tony is the fire chief and he will, he has agreed that uh he's not like going there, going there, like he, his, his residence is in Nashville. Um but he said he's willing to come down for a couple of days a week if needed to, as an interim basis. Um to kind of get us until our new party is appointed and starts. A couple of things want to highlight. Um we do have a new website. I highly encourage the public to sign up for the notify me function on that website. Uh so the other day we posted um. An alert and a news flash for uh the fires, the new fire station serving as a, as a warming station. Actually, I want to commend uh. Gavin for actually recommending that idea to me. So thank you so much. And the ball ran with it. So I don't know if we had anyone show up. I don't think it, but it doesn't matter. We had it available.
Got a good reaction, people who saw it. They were thankful and appreciative.
Okay, good. So um but the public can find about, that's a good, I bring up the warming station as example of. Sign up for the notify me function on the new website. We'll get, we'll get uh an email of of those sort of like alerts and functions. So please, um town offices will be closed on Monday, February, it's the state's. Uh observation, observance of Washington's birthday, I believe. I thought it was President's Day, oh, I went to the Secretary State's website. I think they listed it. Okay, that's what I go by. Um the uh departments have a lot of good information, the library, the conservation um agent. And um Public Works, Fire and the Police Department. They all put a lot of information on on the town administrator's um report, which is online. So please, I encourage the public, as always, go to it, uh including good pictures and other ones. Um I'm gonna look at Megan because you didn't say, do you have anything for the town administration board?
Uh I think just to elaborate on notify me, so for those watching or um, you know, watching later. It's great because when you click on it, you have to sign in to create an account on the website. But then you can choose any of the things that you're interested in and and change them. So if you want to receive. Meeting agendas for a certain meeting, you can sign up for that. If you want to get public works alerts or new flashes, you can really tailor it to. To what you're interested in. So um to do that, you do need to create a, you know, free account where all you have to do is put in your name and um email address. Maybe a phone number if you want to get alerts for texts. But we're, we're trying to encourage people to um. Sign up that way so that they're. sign up that way so that they're No, no.
Good job.
All right. All right. Um, then, so. It's not on the agenda, I thought we were going to have, so we have a meeting coming up on the eleventh, on February eleventh. Uh, originally, um, Jeff Swanberg was going to chair the meeting with uh Alana uh as the Finance Committee Chair, and I spoke to Jeff yesterday. And he uh would prefer that I take on the responsibility on Saturday. Uh, he does say hi, by the way. He told me to tell everyone, he said hi. Uh, so with that, we have been putting together the agenda. Um, I know Alana and Jeff had talked to, uh had talked previously, Alana's in the room, that's why I keep gesturing this way. Um, had talked previously about um putting the agenda together. And I think the theory was, or the the philosophy was to get back more to, we've heard several times, I remember hearing it when I was chair, um, that this is a joint budget review between the Finance Committee and the Select Board, and obviously the schools are um are invited to attend. They are a large part of the budget and they are important part of our town. Um, but what happens is when you have a larger presentation, when you have all of those presentations in a row, um, you know, we kind of lose the flow of the conversation that we all feel like we never get a chance to have. So, um, I believe, I I believe that was the intent behind, uh originally, I had been, uh, when I was talking with Alana, it the conversation had said that um the schools, because they had already, they had already presented um uh the Budget Subcommittee Meeting, which has uh two members of each board on it. Uh, they also presented at the Finance Committee, uh which is a recorded meeting, and the School Committee uh as a recorded meeting. So we, they had an idea that the presentation for the school budget was already out there. Um, so I think that the thought was, we haven't had the town government um budget, overall budget talk, and we haven't seen what capital planning has. So we wanted to make sure that they had time, and then there was time for more robust discussion after the break. Um, you know, we spoke to, um, Alana and I had several conversations today with the School Committee Chair. Um, and the schools have been working to add additional information to their presentation. Um, Alana said. Yeah, so, um, what we didn't want to neglect that opportunity. So what we would like to do is put together on the agenda pretty much as what? Thank you. See, I didn't look at that. Thank you. Um, so yeah, so that the um, the School Department, we added them back. And originally, um, they were not on there, but we added it as um for their updated information. So we're looking for, um, you know, we we've seen, we have seen that their their presentation. Um, we're interested to see uh what's new and and we look forward to having that discussion. Um, and Alana, is there anything that you want to add to that? Um, should I, or or talk to the hour?
It's not a big crowd.
Yes, um, I think Christine has covered it all. Um, I just wanted to apologize that the agenda is a little late in coming. Um, meeting is Saturday. Um, Jeff and I had talked before his medical leave and then you know, he had assumed, I think we had each assumed the other had informed Greg in our decision making. And then Greg had informed the School Department and then the agenda was forthcoming and then it came to pass that that was not the case. Um, when I proposed for the uh agenda, so uh there was just, you know, miscommunication there. And so I apologize that this is a little late in coming. Um, and yeah, we look forward to Saturday and uh I think it'd be could be a good meeting with uh some good discussion.
Absolutely.
Looking forward to the Select Board's uh presentation perspective as well.
Exactly. Well, and that was actually something I wanted to bring up. So obviously, you know, we do have, you know, at the after, after the break, it's the Left Board perspective. So, you know, I feel like either we typically don't get to that, or it's we kind of turn it over to FinCom because you guys have a lot of, a lot of perspectives now. We bring slide. Exactly. So I don't know if there's something that you think that we should discuss that we want to bring, or if we just want to individually talk about our perspectives when we get there that that day. I I just wanted to throw that out there.
I would, uh, go ahead, Chris.
I'm, I'm just, I mean, that one, that one to me is always kind of interesting because our our individual perspectives are one thing, but the the perspective really is comes in great support in in the numbers. The math is really not, at at that point, it's more about what what the, you know, it's about the numbers, not what our uh individual opinions are about, you know, where do we, where do we spend this, this money versus that money. I think it's it's more about the the raw numbers that Greg uses to create the budget. So I, you know, I don't, I don't.
Um, my comment, I think it somewhat falls in, Chris, is that um having specific, okay, Select Board, make your comments. And okay, it's income, make your comments. I have always enjoyed the discussion aspect of this meeting. That I think we have slighted away from, slid away from, or whatever the term would be. Uh, over the course of time, mostly probably due to time constraints. Um, so I would prefer, rather than seven and eight being Select Board perspectives, Finance Committee perspectives, it rather be uh perspectives of participants. And everybody gets an opportunity to speak if they chose so to choose. Uh, to talk about various concerns and aspects of what has just been presented to us. I have told several people, I haven't, I haven't dug into Greg's proposed budget because I think I would prefer to see him present it, hear what his rationale is for the presentation. And then hear perspectives relative to why something might be off, why something might be questioned, why something might be need to be discussed. I also think moving forward as a board, that we need to have a lot more robust communication if there are concerns about where we might be able to make some changes, and that might be in consultation with the FinCom. And it might be in some consultation with the schools if we learn things that we didn't understand or know. Um, but this meeting is really supposed to be the the jump off, right? Not the point where everybody gets their guard up and starts arguing with one another. That's not what this meeting is supposed to be. It's supposed to be a discussion about where we are, why we are, and what we might be able to do. And then walk away and think about it and then have those discussions leading up the May between those meetings. And I think a lot of that middle part, the meat is has been missing, and it's just been go to the meeting, argue, and then nothing changes, and then we all are, you know, there's there's disappointment at the end of the day. I don't want to have arguments, I want to have discussions, and I don't want to have, uh, you know, animosity, I want to have discussions. And I sense there might be a sense of of nervousness on parts from individuals that is occurring before we've had any discussion at all. And that's, you know, I see Natasha has her hand up.
And so real quick, um, to that end, though, I just have a quick question, um, or or quick comment regarding um Finance Committee perspectives and Select Board perspective. Again, because since this is our agenda, we can, we can make this however we want. What if, so I actually, I do think it's important for us to have the Finance Committee perspectives because they're the ones who are overseeing the budget. And they're the ones who are looking, as far as overseeing the budget of the town and and looking at trends and things like that. So what if we did, what if we pushed the Finance Committee perspectives to before the break? So you got the business done, had a break, and then came back and had general discussion in general. So you would, it would open it up for that much more um robust discussion.
And I I guess sort of the question, that's the wrong word, I would, I would ask, is the intent to have finance, when you say Finance Community Perspective, is that each individual saying, your line of concern is, I think this?
No, we have prepared a um a consensus uh with some slides and and
That's what you've got prepared?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's our sort of
State of the town, kind of.
A bit, yeah.
For a little bit.
Yeah, okay, good. That's the type of thing, I think, rather than having, you know, individuals speak, to have a presentation on.
Right, well, I told my, you know, we discussed it uh in creating these this slide presentation. That is the general, that is from the committee. But when we enter the discussion, we're
Everybody, yeah.
We're now an individual.
I get it.
And if your, you know, opinion is a little bit different from where has another aspect to it that was not in our presentation, that that is then your, your time.
And that's, and that's the part that gets, that I enjoy hearing. I don't want to hear arguments, but I want to hear, you know, rational discussion.
I think that's, I think that's along the lines of the, you know, the reports that, um, you know, Paul McCarthy gave me. And prepared the last several years.
Yeah.
Or has been a part of preparing the last four years where, you know, we we get into the discussion about
Yes.
You know, potential override, other swear words, all that stuff.
That would definitely, yeah.
You know, so so that's, that's, that's the intent of that, and I'm okay with it. You know, that, and I I agree with David too, it's, you know, that, that to me, coming away from that meeting as many times as I have now, it's that to me is the um, the best part of the meeting is when there's, you know, dialogue and back and forth between all the interested parties in the room. If some, you know, some run out of time and they don't want to be there for it, well, then they don't, they don't have to. But that to me has been, you know, after the break, where we really had, you know, some good discussions. And it's good discussions, by the way, that have led to us as a, as a body and and you guys as a body coming back to our individual meetings and and making changes, and you know, on behalf of whether it's, you know, police and fires, rules, DPW. You know, we've made adjustments almost every year from this meeting.
Oh, yeah, it's never that.
It's not, it's not the same. So it's for anybody to be, you know, anybody to be crazy up and arms about what's going on right now, what they expect Saturday. That to David's point, that's the start, this was done before. You know, and then we go from there and we see what, you know, where where can we make changes, where can we make adjustments? Because frankly, some, you know, some department heads have, have, you know, told Greg, I think I can do this. And and maybe you can use this for that, you know, you use what I can't use for somewhere else. So, I mean, it's just a thought, but I look forward to the, you know, second part of the meeting after the break. But I agree, we'll be able to get all the business done, I probably just launch into a, a group discussion.
And I think that the other part, and Natasha, I did not create you, I'm sorry, um, but the other part that, you know, I think it's changed since these last, since in the past five years, since I've been doing it at least, is um we have become so much more transparent with our budgeting process. And so it used to be, that I remember people telling stories, and you guys are sure remember it. Where that, everybody would go to the meeting to find out what the budget would be. Like, no one would know walking into the February meeting what the budget was to begin with. So the fact is, like, we already know, it's it's fully out there in the open, we've already looked at, you know, this is what we're looking at. But it's the very beginning of it, and and now we just, you know, we we just do the work we need to get done. Um, Natasha?
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, I I do appreciate the, the amended and the consideration to revisit what was expected, I think, all along, and I want to make sure that that's very clear that the School Department, the School Committee had no, understands the framework of what the charter dictates. I think it's that the expectation of what um has historically happened in practice to not being told that there would be a deviation to that until today, which was the frustrating piece. And so I think, you know, we have, I, everyone knows I'm part of many budget meetings, I attend your meeting, I attend FinCom's meeting even last night. And it was quite surprising to me to have not been been all part of these meetings, not have been told once, hey, we will be looking to revisit and to revert to the more traditional approach of being in that way, and that is okay. So I'm not opposed to that idea at all. I don't think any of the School Committee would be. It's the fact that three or four days before the meeting happens, after we've gone through all this work to counter, get feedback in from meeting with different boards, to putting updates together, meeting internally, that we would be told that, oh, I'm sorry, we made a decision and you're not going to be part of it. I just would like you to understand that perspective and and appreciate that feedback for what it was as a a communication. I wouldn't say miscommunication, it was a zero communication, and there's been many months that this could have been, if this was the consideration, that I would have hoped it would have been introduced in one of the subcommittee meetings or at FinCom. We start our budget process early on in the fall. And so I would suggest that if that's the expectation that the town wants to do, and I wholeheartedly support it, that that expectation be made clear at the onset, to not waste anyone's time on what we are expected to do going into this meeting. We have students who will be joining us on Saturday as well, which we're very excited about. And so it was quite a disappointment to to really have to revisit in the last moment, like, is this actually not going to happen the way we all thought it would be, because we had not been told otherwise. So I just wanted to share that feedback. You know, I look forward to, you know, hearing all of the information that will be shared. I will also want to set the expectation that the information we present is not going to be all new because we're not going to be able to go back right now at the eleventh hour to revisit again the presentation. So we've already started to amend it, and we're going to be putting some fine tweaks on it. But it's not going to be completely new as what we've, was suggested today. So I just want to make sure that, understand, there might be some redundancy or what was shared before. But it also will include feedback and incorporated more visibility into numbers that we've been asked, um, as we've done our um, roadshow with meeting with the different boards and 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 individuals.
Okay, thank you. And, um, yeah, and as far as the the new, that was more, um, I think that was more my reacting to your conversation that, um, that you had so much new information to pr- present. So I figured that it would be more time efficient to present just the new stuff. So if that, if that's not the case, that's totally fine. I was just, that's
It's more just embedded in data, in in how it was presented, the formatting, that kind of stuff, you know, maybe answering some questions that we've heard from meeting with individuals during meetings. I mean, we met to the town budget subcommittee meetings, you know, we've gone through different folks. And so, um, is it going to be anything earth shattering? Probably not. I think it's going to be somewhat along the lines. But we also, um, just on January, was it January twenty first, just got the town administrator's recommendation of the two point, you know, five, which was not something that had been discussed at a prior subcommittee meeting as well. So that will be new for all of us to
Hundred thousand dollar deficit that needed to be brought up to
Again, conversation for Saturday, I'm just saying that that is a new piece that, um, had, we we was not aware of until that. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Um, and and I will point out the other, the other part is that, um, as far as the presentation goes and and I apologize for my role in this. Um, but again, I just found out at three o'clock, two o'clock yesterday that I was chairing it, so um that that was my catch up for that. Um, so I apologize that, um, I made anyone feel this way. Um, and that I caused any, that I was part of any of the confusion. Um, I will point out a lot of the work that you're doing, that you've done for the presentation, I think are the, is, I think moving forward, and this is just if we decide to do this next year in this format, um, and have it as more of a discussion and a select board and FinCom together. Um, I would assume you would also have a presentation anyway for Finance Committee and Budget Subcommittee because that typically you present there anyway. So I'm not necessarily sure we would save you a lot of work, but but maybe.
I I think the, the expectation always, has always been, we hear feedback, we tweak, and then we'd have that other opportunity to incorporate that feedback in a more public view. So if it is that we would not be presenting until we had more feedback, I would say that our timeline on how we planned and maybe met with people may not have been so condensed in doing it all before, you know, January, whatever it was. That maybe that we would maybe stretch it out and think, okay, now we will listen to, you know, it'd be more strategic, listening to what the presentation is the town hearing the feedback. So that would allow us maybe a better opportunity to process things in a different way. And again, it's just about setting expectations earlier on, which I would really um love to do collaboratively, um, if given the opportunity.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so.
I just one point clarification, just to make sure.
Go ahead.
So, because I can, I can, I can already manipulate the draft document for docs and for the agenda for the eleven. So, um, Iren moved the Finance Committee Perspectives before the break.
Yeah, you moved it, yeah.
Moved it. Um, so right now, the Moved it, um, so right now the order is. Meeting opening, public comments, uh, state delegation remarks, not sure either the state elements will be able to attend. Town administrator budget recommendations, um, and then school department budget recommendations, overview of capital. Movement plan, finance committee, then break. Do you like that order? Would you like me to change it to town administrator and capital, school, finance? Does, do they even care about the order?
What are your thoughts on?
Um. I think that order is being, we usually open.
TA, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, this is kind of the way it's done.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that makes sense.
Very good, and then, um, and then after the break. Just.
Okay. I, I think that's, um, and.
Do we have an overall time for the, how, how long do we? No, I mean, like for the overall meeting, do we go to two hours?
Uh, usually we go till noon.
Back in the day, it was, uh, eight to two.
Well, we've done so much, you know, and I think the whole problem.
Yeah. Yes, we're getting better.
When nobody's seen the budget yet, I can imagine it going.
Exactly, um, and I think that, you know, and I do think that select board perspectives, um, and, and I, I agree with David and, and. Chris about, you know, in, in general. The town administrator presented, um, a balanced budget to us that, you know, we are looking at, we are internalizing, we're understanding. We, and then from there we move on, um, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea to come up with. Um, and wouldn't be for this one, just because it's last minute, but for the next, um, for next year. So remember that for next year, um, to come up with some, some thoughts about, you know, where do we stand on an override? Where do we stand on, you know, debt exclusions, where, you know, those types of things that kind of. Get put out in the ether, but never actually. Have, you know, have a board backing behind it as to what we think. Um, you know, there's plenty of conversations around it, but there's, there's nothing else, you know, so I think that that might. You know, that might be something to revisit next.
That's what Jeff and I were sort of envisioning it, is it, it is a meeting, um, between our two boards, our meeting, and. You know, each board has its sort of term that's saying, you know, here's our. Sort of forest of the trees and what we're thinking about and what we're concerned about. And here's what, you know, the other board, same thing, and then we have discussion on the specifics in the budget that we're looking at and go from there.
Yeah, I think that the whole issue of an override is, is very interesting, because we've. For several years now, we, we've received information from, you know, certain people, and not to question the numbers of the, or anything else, but we've received. You know, several suggestions, it's, we got to do it now, we had without, when, you know, we're at the point where. We, we shouldn't even get this far without it, and we have, so, I mean, that's a credit to everybody involved in the process, and I, you know. I don't for one minute think that, you know, it, it will never happen, but if, if we continue to work like we have. And not have to down that road, that's a better road for the town, but I. Very, it's very interesting to continue this here and see the outcry and, and the call for overrides. Yet continuously we're able to, um, you know, get by without it, and it's. I don't, I don't think you just go through that, just to, I have more money to play with it, it needs to be a specific. Reason, and we haven't, we haven't, we're not at that reason yet, we. We very well may be in a couple of years when, you know, when, when the green metal runs its course, but to, to now, that everybody in the building. Has been able to get us to, you know, start to build the twenty twenty four budget without having to, it can override to me is. Based on what I've been reading for the last five years is, uh, you know, most of all miracle.
Yes, and we are working with Lori, um, Florida, and, um, on an. On a projection model, um, and we've had some help from our old friend Bob Garvey on that, um, and. Because, right, we, we looked, we went back and looked at some of the projections we had done, and some of them were. Um, you know, not where we ended up being, and why is that? And so, you know, change our assumptions and. You know, change the, the modeling, I am not of like technical wits for doing that kind of stuff. Bob and Lori, thank goodness for them, um, but we do have some, some people on the FinCom that are also quite good at that. So, uh, that is something we have been working on and sort of looking at in terms of. Um. Better, being better prepared for. Big picture and big ticket items, and when we talk about, okay, we're adding, you know, green metal school on to do as a, as a debt exclusion and things like that. What else is going on so that we can be better prepared to speak to county voters, you know, and things like that? Definitely something that we have, um, in the work.
Great. Uh, where, where are we mentioning the school, the, the MSBA project in the agenda?
I was looking over my notes, and, and however many months ago, Jeff had, had mentioned that it might be good to include that, so. I don't have it in a, I don't have it as a separate item, I can, I can make it this such, and I can invite you to record. Just.
I think it's more of a consideration of.
Of the cost.
Of cost.
Cost of, of living is essentially, uh, in that, I mean, we could have, we could have two hours on, on that. We could have two hours on, on water and sewer, uh, you know, and all of that goes into the. What comes out of people's pockets, which is really the bottom line, I mean, we can talk override and whatever all day, but, you know. Those other things that are already in there add to that, and we've got problems. Again, this is a discussion for Saturday, not really for tonight, and, um. You know, I'm, I'm also interested, and I hope we have a, a, a piece of time on Saturday, I appreciated the, um, email you sent today, Greg. Where sort of outlined where did our free cash come from?
I'm sure.
And, you know, one of my concerns is, this is two or three consecutive years, we've had. Lots of free cash, and great, and it's nice to be able to get some of the infrastructure stuff done that we can do with free cash, but. Perhaps part of the discussion, and I, I'm one, you know, that I'm one who's trying to be as conservative with our budgeting as possible. But perhaps we're being a bit too conservative, we're coming in two million dollars, short, uh, two million dollars, uh, yeah, uh. Where we get two million dollars of free cash, that's sort of high. Um, but maybe it's COVID, maybe it's, it's, uh, reimbursements, it's things that we. Didn't expect or whatever, there might be rational reasons, but that's a discussion to have, because that might open up some room in the budget.
David, I will give you, and I'll find the, the meeting and the timestamp for you, um, we discussed that very thing at FinCom. Um, and Greg was there and Lori, or at least we're. But the same questions raised, so, um, let me go back. Exactly, but if you knew where it was.
So to that point, the discussion of the green medal, you know, the potential, you know, the MSBA. In my opinion, I, I don't disagree with Jeff, and it's something we should talk about, to me, that's, that's the perfect, you know, that's one of the perfect. Um, starter for the second half of the meeting after the break, you know, oh, by the way. This is something, you know, we have all this to discuss and all the considerable, also, you know, don't, let's not forget on the horizon, that, that, it's no more on the horizon, it's right in front of us.
So in the past, if I, if I, if like my last slide be something potential we'll talk about, and, and it was the fire station one year, I had a resolution for that. Um, and it was, um, Peg, what, I think it was the first one I did, it was just like, hey, what do you guys want to do about it? So, um, and, uh, so I think, I think I could throw aside it, just to say like, here's. The number seven changes to be based on however many months ago when I, I got from Angie, uh, the past chief successor, like, if this is, if it costs X amount of money. Using presumptions of tax rates, how much money to be for average income family household, that, that's the same numbers, so that's what I'll present again. Um, for better or worse, I don't have any, so, but I could throw that up on the slide. And then that can be like sort of food for thought coming into a discussion.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I would hesitate to have a full discussion about MSBA and, and green metal building at that meeting, because. That is, honestly, it's a film animal, but. I think it's also the elephant in the room that you have to acknowledge, so you have to know that this is coming, that this is a vote that's going to be happening and, and. You know, we're, we're hoping the residents support it and, and we're, but we need to take that into consideration as a bigger part. So I like it at the end of Greg.
Yeah, that's, that's probably what me, yeah.
Yeah.
But I just, I just think, I just thought it would be, you know, either, I mean, at the end of Greg's leads into the rest of it, but I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Either way, because it is capital. Did you have anything else, David? Do you have anything on? All right, thank you for, for coming in and, and talking for this. Yes, see town government at work.
Usually just on my couch.
With popcorn on. Um, all right, so, uh, and the rest is the chair report. I just want to thank, uh, I, I want to thank everyone again for participating in the fire, in the fire chief interviews. Again, not something that I do every day, so I really appreciate, um, the time, the effort, the questions, um, the patience of, of the people. I thought we had a really good process, and I'm really excited to move into the next. Uh, the next step of that. I want to congratulate Chief Sauer on his retirement, um, and, uh, well deserved. But of course, he will be very missed. Um, and I know we still have probably one more meeting with the assistant town administrator, Zimuno. However, I do also want to, um, you know, thank her for everything that she has done to date. Um, and so we appreciate, we appreciate it all, so. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Chris, what do you have today?
I asked this question of Greg, I'll ask it again. The question I, I have is that, um. In the discussions around the green medal, the, the MSBA, the green medal, you know, new building, that type of thing, we've had a discussion in the, and the group has had the discussion. About not making that school a, um, shelter.
Correct, yeah.
Potential shelter site, but my question is. Do we have a, is there a dollar amounts attached to making that or not making that a shelter? And the, the, the follow up to that is, you know, what, what are our, what are our present shelters? And what number of people can each of those shelters accommodate? And the only reason I, I'm thinking it is because if it's not a, if it's not a particularly. Um, burdensome amounts, I don't understand why we wouldn't.
Okay.
You know, have that to offer as a shelter at some point, and that's based on, you know, all these, um. Odd and strange weather events that we see in catastrophic weather events, and we, you know, we've, we've not had. Suffered through some of those things yet, but there's nothing to say that we won't, and at the point, if we do come across one of those catastrophic. Catastrophic events, whether it's weather or otherwise in the town of Maynard, do we have enough shelter space? Without that as a shelter.
I follow looking up on.
That's, that's, that's like question, and again, just to, to echo what everybody else has said, that the process with the fire chief is great. Can't appreciate enough, um, our hiring, that, you know, the services of Jack and his company to, to come down and, and do everything, and then. Again, congratulations, Megan, um, the town of Concord is, you know. Greatly enriched by having you on their staff, look forward to, uh, and you do great things there, but you will be greatly missed here as well, so. Get that Nebraska hat going for them, see if anyone, see if anyone, anyone talking even knows that that is. And by the way, I was going to tell this guy, he was talking about the grass, why they cut the grass at Miami. He, he, people laugh, but in, in college football, that's, that's a very common thing, Florida State was famous for letting their grass go for two weeks. Before a team like Miami used to come up to have, tell a hat, and, and, and that was their edge, they let their grass go, it's Miami. Didn't want to run that long grass and didn't have the right speaking for it. I don't think, I don't think we were that sophisticated in nineteen ninety two here.
All right, uh, David.
Yeah, Greg, can you once again inquire, um, I'm sure you're aware, um, the icing on Bowes Hill.
Yeah.
Is bad.
Oh, I, I, there was more talk about the reasons.
And they've had to put so much ice melt.
It's been rough. I've, I mean, I've lived there a long time, and, and this is the worst I've seen it.
Okay.
Because it's just so warm up.
But you know, I wonder.
Something has happened, I think, with the geology, because things that seem to, you've got water bubbling up.
Don't wait the, don't wait the global warming.
No, I don't know.
But I will say to, to your point, when I, I go down there, I come up, my street, and I'm not on it well, but I.
So this is here, so you're.
Right after, right after the.
Yeah, Park District.
Yeah.
So it comes outside the street, what is that? But when you come down Applewood, you get about five hundred yards down that street, it's like.
It is.
Second house, and it just.
You gotta be careful. Yeah.
It is.
Like, there was a, like a.
That seems to be water flow from somewhere that's changed.
But wasn't last year?
I think that guy, like, in the last four, five years.
At all, the reason I'm asking is, is when we put this thing looks down, is there any?
But it, but it's, but it, it is, it is, it's much, it's much more, um, tolerant now, it's.
People are putting in some pumps and then, and it'll be sometimes, um.
Oh, yeah, you have to watch out for that.
They're not necessarily pumping it in the street, but they pump it in their yard. But somebody did mention at Bowes Hill, they mentioned the sidewalk there.
Okay.
Being impossible, but I'm convinced it's the ever source issue.
So that's, that I think we know is the issue.
Yeah.
In that regards, uh, because there's a total of all that. And, and there's some, there seems to be some sort of deterioration secondary, but I have no idea about some.
But so at least, so at least from, from like my perspective, someone that lives over there. I, you know, coming out of the driveway thing, you know, you kind of take a look to see what's changed, uh, really nothing's changed on top of that hill.
No.
In, in the last several years, it really hasn't been any projects. See, nothing that I can see.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, a subsurface question.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's getting, it's getting to be, it's happening.
But this is, that's right here, they're, they're throwing a ton.
I think it's, I, it's gotta, it's gotta be the DPW, because it's, it's broadcast down the hill.
Okay.
And, and, and like, when I go, when I go through there, like, I, I only see it because my headlights hit it, because it's dark when I leave. And it's, it's green, it's like. I think that's Justin's guy, it's quite.
My other comment was going to be, I am very appreciative of the fact that we were able to, uh, work through, it looks like through a, two way resolution. The issue with, uh, St. Bridget's in the parking and the, the, uh, fire station and everything else. Um, the parishioners are extremely pleased, the priest is extremely pleased, it's always good to have a priest on your side. And, uh, the, it's, I think. Uh, we got to a good place, it may, probably won't be resolved from what I've heard until at least the spring because of various issues, but. But it's, um, I think we worked it through the right way. That's it.
All right. A second.
I will second, yes.
All right, thank you, everybody, good night.